I can't see you. Are we ready to go? We are, are we on? Okay, so. Good evening, everyone. We are on TV now. And we welcome you to the Goffstown School Board meeting. Before we start, we have two public hearings. I'm going to call to order the first public hearing at seven o'clock regarding the Chromebook donations. Just bear with me as I read the governor's executive order. Consistent with Governor Sununu Executive Order 2020-04, Emergency Order Number 12, Board members will be joined via a Zoom conference call for the August 31st, 2020 Board Meeting. The meeting can be viewed on GTV 16 On Demand and will also be streamed live on the GTV YouTube channel. The public is invited to call 603-766-5646, Participant Code 685562. If you wish to make a public comment at the beginning of the meeting, please wait for the instructions and then press number nine. Your microphone will be unmuted, and you will be directed to state your name and address prior to making your public comment. You could also have emailed comments to Denise Morin at sau19.org prior to four o'clock this afternoon. Let's see. The Board reserves the right to read your public comment during the meeting. However, any public comment will be included in the official meeting minutes. I need to take attendance of Board members. Most of them are here in the high school, but we do have a few that are visiting us from home on Zoom. So when I call your name, if you can just say if you're here. Dan Cludier.
I am here.
Thank you. Tim Stetson.
I am here.
Ellen Vermakowicz. Susanna Buzell.
I'm here.
Janelle O'Brien. I don't think. Are you here?
Yep, I'm here.
Oh, there you are. Thank you. Jared Talbot. Ginny McKinnon. Retta Chaffee.
Here.
And I'm Heather Trapez, and I am here. So if we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you, everybody. So we are going to start the public hearing for regarding Chromebook donations. Brian?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to just give a little bit of an overview. But before I do, if I can ask everyone who's in the room with me here to make sure that you're muted. We're going to get feedback from one another's mics if we're not. And Mr. Gross, if you see someone who's not, would you please mute them? So consistent with RSA 198:20B, this would be a public hearing for us to accept funds made available during the year. And I'd like to give a little bit of an overview of this, and then I'm going to ask Mr. Gross to speak to this. We had a citizen who is with us this evening, and I'd like to recognize Otis Hendershot, who had identified that there was a need for some families with help with technology. And Otis started a crowdfunding page and was able to raise, I think, Scott, over $8,000 in a very short amount of time. So I'd like to recognize and thank Mr. Hendershot for his vision on this, his dedication in making this happen. Scott, is there anything that you might add to that?
Yeah, I would like to add that. You know, over the last several months, I think there's been a lot of community support for a variety of things. And certainly, Mr. Hendershot's idea of putting forward a fundraising effort on Facebook through a GoFundMe page was just one of them. But I saw a lot of other things as well, you know, different community members getting together for childcare issues and just overall trying to be a positive, you know, influence in a situation where certainly COVID-19 has presented many challenges for families. So with that, you know, it's extremely generous of Mr. Hendershot. Not only did he raise the funds, but he also, you know, he'll explain, I hope, that he's in the IT world. And he's also trying to make sure that we get a really good price on whatever devices we do get.
Well, I might pause there, Madam Chair, and ask if Mr. Hendershot would like to would like to speak as this was truly his vision and his project.
Yeah, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Fantastic. So happy to help. I guess I just doubled down on exactly everything that Scott said. This was a chance for the community to really come together and help each other out. So I was edified to be a part of it, even if I'm just the one that's kind of capturing the funds. So just a quick update. We have one of three options to disperse the funds. So another one of the parents that has children in the school system, he works for a company that currently has a contract with SAU19, and he's put forward some pricing and availability for some devices. I'm also working through my employer, which is United Health Group. We get massive buying power when it comes to devices. So I'm waiting on a quote back from them, from the suppliers directly. And the third way would be if neither of those give us the best bang for the buck. It would just be a cash donation into SAU19. So the idea is, what we're trying to do is to get as many devices as possible into the hands. So we should have this wrapped up in the next couple of weeks, but glad to be a part of it, for sure.
Thank you, Otis. So given that we don't know whether this will be a cash donation or a donation of equipment, the Board might want to consider just kind of a general motion to accept the donation of either cash for IT equipment or the IT equipment itself. But I would encourage you to do that as part of this public hearing, get that on the record. And we wouldn't have a need to have the public hearing go on any longer. But if there was anyone who else wanted to speak, that would be the time.
I would like to make a motion to accept the donation from the crowdfunding source that Otis had put together, be it in laptop or cash form.
I'd like to second. This is Janelle.
And if we may want to amend that slightly, if it's not a particular laptop, but some other form of electronic device, that would be acceptable as well.
So amended.
Seconded.
And Heather, this was Tim that made that. I'm sorry. I know I shouldn't have said my name.
Heather, for some reason, you're not coming through on the feed. I don't know if you're muted.
It's not picking up Heather's microphone.
Take it off. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
So we'll just do that. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor from Tim and a second from Janelle. So I'm going to take a roll call. Dan?
Yes.
Ellen? Tim?
Yes.
Susanna?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Ginny? Retta?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. So we're unanimous with that motion. Thank you very much, Otis. We do have public comment if anybody has anything to say on the public hearing. Scott, do we have anyone? I don't see Scott. You're muted.
There was no one on the public comment line. I apologize. I was on mute.
That's okay. Thank you, Scott. All right, so I am going to close this public hearing. We have one more. I'll take a motion to adjourn this public hearing.
So moved by Dan.
Seconded by Jared.
All right, so Dan made the motion. Jared second. Roll call. Dan?
Yes.
Ellen? Tim?
Yes.
Susanna?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Retta?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. So we are adjourned from this first public hearing. Before I go to the second one, is it okay that I don't read the executive order again for the second public hearing? Is everybody okay with that? Okay. So I am going to call to order the second public hearing, which is use of digital equipment in the classroom at 7:10. We do need to stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance again.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. So we have another public hearing. Brian?
Thank you. So this public hearing is consistent with RSA 189-68 as well as Goffstown School Board Policy EEAA. I should state for the record that both of these public hearings were appropriately noticed. The last one, as a financial public hearing element, was put in the newspaper for a minimum of seven days. This public hearing was also in the newspaper, so it was appropriately noticed. And essentially, what we have here is this pertains to the ability to use video and audio recording in classrooms. So the RSA requires us to hold a public hearing, and it requires us to have a vote of the school board. The next piece that will need to happen, consistent with Policy EEAA, would be that for us to use any kind of so-called live streaming video from classrooms, we have to have the teacher's permission, and we have to have the consent of all parents of students in the classroom. So at this point, we're going through the first stages to allow us to continue to explore the use of live stream video and audio as part of our instructional repertoire. So this is something that the Board can discuss. I'm happy to give more information, but essentially, in order to have any kind of live stream video, we have to have the public hearing, you have to have a vote authorizing by the Board, and you have to have the written consent from the educator as well as parents. So I might pause there and ask if there are any questions specific to this.
Jared, go ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Brian, if this is only needed for a student for all classes within the day? Or do they need one for each specific class that they have throughout the day? For written permission?
If it's an elementary school student who has a self-contained classroom with only one, you know, traditional elementary school, that would be sufficient. But for a high school student who might take five or more classes, we would have to have written consent from each of those five teachers as well as all the parents of all the students in those rooms.
If I may follow up, Ms. Chair. If we do have, if this Board approves it, and the facilitator, the teacher approves it, and the student's parent chooses not to, what would be the remedy that the student's parents would have to then take as part of that initiative?
So if a parent, for whatever reason, doesn't agree with their child being a part of a video lesson or anything of that nature, I would think we would work with them, Jared, because it could be that a student could just simply be off camera. So I think that there, that could be a natural remedy. There could still be an audio component, but I think we'd work with individual parents on a case-by-case basis. You know, really, what we're trying to do here is just give our administrators and our educators an additional instructional tool. So I understand that there are privacy concerns that some folks may have, and I wouldn't want to say we would move students out of a particular section. But it could be that if we had consent for another class, the student that we're trying to do this for maybe would move sections to another class. So I think on a case-by-case basis, we would work with families. But given that it's a global pandemic, and we're trying to do the best we can for all of our kids, I would hope that people would see the benefit of this and allow us to proceed forward.
Great, thank you, Brian. Did you have any other questions, Jared?
I'm good for now. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Ginny, go ahead. Ginny, you're muted. Still muted, honey.
Scott, can you help?
Justin's helping.
Justin's helping. She's in high school.
I can't unmute her from my end.
There she goes.
Okay, you can hear me now? Okay. I think it's a good idea because I think it gives the students and the teachers a little bit more personal contact in the course of a day, in the course of their lessons. Because there's some classes like, that you need to, like Spanish for, or any language where you need to hear and see and listen. Sometimes you need to see a face, and you need to be corrected immediately. Am I right, Retta, as far as learning a language goes? And I think just, it's the closeness and the personal contact would be a lot better emotionally and a better learning tool for our students and our teachers.
Thank you, Ginny. Anybody else? Sure, go ahead, Susanna.
Would this apply to recording, or is it just live feed? Or if teacher decides to record, would that cover?
It's both.
It's both. Okay, thank you.
All right, are there any other questions before? Oh, Ellen, are you? Okay, go ahead, Ellen.
Ellen, you're muted.
Justin's helping to unmute Ellen.
Out of curiosity, are the GTV microphones not broadcasting our people?
Well, we have headsets on, but I think some of us are having problems with them.
And this is being broadcast using Zoom, so.
As well, so I didn't know.
It was, there are no microphones there. It's only the Zoom.
Oh, okay, thank you.
All right, Ellen, why don't you unplug?
Actually, Scott, can you turn, can you unmute her? She's muted on Zoom.
Sure. I can't.
Okay, she's unmuted now.
Can you hear me now?
Yep, go ahead, Ellen.
Okay, thank you. Is this for the remote students that are full remote? Or is this also for teachers who are going to record a lesson that children can go to later? Is this, it's for both? Okay, thank you.
All right. Sorry, everybody, we're having technical difficulties here with our headsets. Is there any other questions before we take a motion?
Heather, I have another question.
Janelle, is that you? I'm sorry, I can't.
Janelle?
Yep, go ahead, Janelle.
To kind of follow up with what Ellen said. So students who are online from home, who are fully remote, will be able to view classes from home that are livestreamed or videotaped of it?
This would allow us to begin to evaluate some of those instructional pieces to potentially do exactly that, Janelle. So I do want to be clear that this is a new tool for us instructionally. And I might ask Mrs. Barry if she has anything she'd like to add. But I don't want to give any allusions to the Board that instantaneously we will be livestreaming classes all across the Goffstown School District. That's not the case. This is another instructional avenue for us to pursue. We still have to get all the permissions. There are logistical pieces that need to come into play. But we wanted to at least remove the restriction from RSA 189 and Policy EEAA to allow the educators an additional instructional tool in their repertoire.
Just a follow-up, if I may.
Go ahead.
I'm just having a little bit of concern for, I understand that this is going to streamline and probably help out students more than they would ever hurt them. But part of me is struggling with the fact that this is a, you know, a policy for a reason. I know that parents obviously have the right to either say yes or no, and that allows people to kind of have a choice. I guess I'm just a little concerned about who's viewing the classes from home. That makes me a little nervous, I guess. I don't know if there's anything you guys could help to kind of ease that anxiety. I don't know if some parents would like to hear maybe how we're going to be keeping kids safe if we overturn this policy.
Just to clarify, it's not overturning the policy. It's giving permission to use this, consistent with the policy. I think what this allows us to do, first of all, anytime we have kids online, I think we always need to be hyper vigilant about keeping kids safe, about making sure that we're protecting our students' identity, that we're being careful, smart, and methodical about this. So I absolutely share your concerns, and I know that MC does as well. But what this allows us to do, and I would also say, I think this policy was written in a non-pandemic type of mindset. So I think we're at a point where it's necessary for us to take some new approaches, to continue to innovate and to do anything we can using the digital tools that we have. But, you know, to Janelle's point, if you have a student who is, let's say, home and is receiving, on the receiving end of this instructional video, I would certainly expect that families are complying with privacy, that they're using that information in an instructional way. Certainly, if we had any issues with people disclosing or posting video or anything of that nature. And remember, there's nothing that would stop someone from recording something that's happening using their cellphone or using another platform. So all of these things are privacy concerns. And I think, given the weight of the pandemic, we need to evaluate which one of these things we can be smart and make sure we're keeping kids safe. But also, let's give our educators as many instructional tools as we can.
Brian, I wonder if it would be helpful if you could put some context around how something like this might be used. So for instance, we're not, I don't believe, talking about live streaming without purpose. So it's not like this would be turned on at nine o'clock, and it would be just running in the background till 10:00 or 10:30, or something like that. My understanding of this, correct me if I'm wrong, please, Brian, is that it would be very purposeful, it would be timely, it would be pointed towards a definitive lesson, towards instruction, and then it would be turned off. So it's not something that would just, would be left on.
Yeah, I would concur with that, MC. So it would not be our intent to have live video just happening. It might be that a teacher is giving a lesson, and they may record a 15 or a 20-minute segment of that, and then that's the instruction that's used. So I would concur with that. Mrs. Kohler, I might also ask you to weigh in on that question.
Yes, Brian, I agree with what MC had talked about. If teachers and the students in the room give permission to utilize this, I don't see it on when the class is in small group discussion. I see it being pointed at the Promethean Board, perhaps the teacher standing near the Promethean Board for the instruction, going over the objectives of the day, the content, the vocabulary. But when the individual work happens in the classroom or the group work would be occurring, that would not be either taped or livestreamed for air. It would only be the instructional piece. So for most of our instruction, I would envision that you're right. That would be about 15 to 20 minutes of content.
Thank you, Wendy.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Wendy.
Could I just follow up, if you don't mind?
Yeah, go ahead, Janelle. Just speak up a little, please.
Sorry. So I was just, so what I envisioned then, from what Wendy had just said, is really just the camera pointing at the teacher and not being at the back of the classroom where you're seeing the whole class. But you're just being pointed at the teacher. Would that be correct?
Well, I would say, I would say that that would likely be the approach that we would take. It would even, as Wendy described that, it could just be pointed at the Promethean Board. So the teacher might kind of come in and out of the frame. But if a teacher is delivering a lesson, you know, or it could be on a whiteboard, if we have math teachers doing less, you know, solving problems or something of that nature. But I would say that would be the intent. It would not be the intent to have students be part of that, but they would certainly be within the room that would, and that's thus why we need to hold this public hearing.
Brian, might I also add one piece? I also think that if an entire classroom gave permission for this to occur, that there would be a daily reminder, not just an assumption made by the teacher and the students, letting them know that the camera would be going on. So that would be a daily reminder for the students, not just an assumption since we have the permission that that was going to occur. So the teacher would remind the students of that every time the camera was going on, and they would also let them know that the camera was going off as well.
Thank you, Wendy, for that clarification.
Are you all set, Janelle?
Yeah, thank you so much, guys.
All right, thank you. Is there any other questions? Oh, Jared, go ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Just want to make sure that we clearly articulate this. If these are recorded, they're still in a secure format. So not anybody is going to be able to, from JQ Public, to be able to see these. And if they are being represented through Zoom, as an example, you still need to have the Zoom link in order to livestream that information. So we're able to control at least the content of what's going to be sent out and who it would be sent out to. I would only ask that we periodically update our Zoom links, if not daily, at least weekly, so that if they are changing, we can ensure that we continuously are sending to the right people that we choose to do.
Thank you, Jared. All right, is there any other questions, discussion? You have another one, Jared? No. You're going to make a motion? Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve this as presented, at least for the first semester, to see and to ensure that we can talk about the lessons learned that we had from this activity. And then if it's needed for the spring semester as well, I think that we could have another motion later to extend it. But I'd like to at least say for the first semester that we have this as an option to be extended.
Okay, thank you, Jared. Do I have a second? Ellen, I have a second. Any other discussion?
Dan has an inquiry.
Yes, go ahead, Dan.
Can you put dates for me around what first semester means, please?
Dates, Jared.
So I don't know whether the first semester goes through January or some other.
January.
Approximately. That's, it's half the year.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it would be the first half of the year, whenever that is. I know that we're reviewing the calendar later today, I believe, at least for meeting.
Thank you.
So we'll amend that to add January. So we'll amend that to add January 20th or there around?
The first half of the academic year.
Okay. Ellen, you're good with that. Okay. So let's take a roll call. Dan?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Susanna?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Retta?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. So we're unanimous in passing that motion. Do we have public comment? Scott?
There are no, there are no public comment right now.
Okay, thank you, Scott. So I'm going to close the public comment, and we're going to-
I would make a motion, we leave the public hearing.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Do I have a second? By Ellen? Okay, we'll do roll call again. Dan?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Susanna?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Retta?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. So we're unanimous, and we are leaving the second public hearing. And now we're going to start on our Goffstown School Board meeting. So I call the meeting to order at 7:30. Constituent with Governor Sununu's Executive Order 2020-04, Emergency Order Number 12, Board members will be joined via a Zoom conference call for the August 31st, 2020 Board Meeting. The meeting can be viewed on GTV 16 on demand, and will also be streamed live on the GTV YouTube channel. The public is invited to call 603-766-5646. Enter participant code 685562. If you wish to make a public comment at the beginning of the meeting, please wait for the instructions and then press nine. Your microphone will be unmuted, and you will be directed to state your name and address prior to making your public comment. You also could have emailed public comment to Denise Moore at saun19.org prior to four o'clock this afternoon. In the subject line, you would indicate public comment for today's date of August 31st. Please include your name and address and limit your comments to no more than 500 words. The Board reserves the right to read your public comment during the meeting. However, any public comment will be included in the official meeting minutes. And I need to take attendance again for our board members, some are here and some are at home. Dan Cludier?
Here and remote.
Thank you. Ellen Vermakowicz?
Present.
Tim Stetson?
Here and remote.
Susanna Buzel?
Present.
Janelle O'Brien?
Here and remote.
Jared Talbot?
Present.
Ginny McKinnon?
Yes.
Retta Chaffee?
Here.
And I'm Heather Trapez, and I am here. So we are going to do the pledge allegiance one more time. Everybody could rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. All right, so the first thing is public comment. Scott, do we have anything?
There is no public comment right now.
No public comment? Okay, thank you. All right, moving on, we need to approve two sets of minutes, one from June 15th and one from August 3rd. So I'll take a motion for the June 15th meeting.
Move to approve June 15th.
By Ellen, who, a second, by Ginny. Did anybody see anything? Okay, see and none. I'm going to take a roll call. Dan?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Susanna?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Retta?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. So uh unanimous for approving June 15th, 2020. Now we have August 3rd. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
By Ellen, do I have a second? By Ginny, anybody see anything?
Dan just wants to make a comment that it says the meetings-
Go ahead, Dan.
The meeting started at 10:59 PM. That is not a misprint. That is accurate.
Yes.
And it did end at 12:20 AM the following day. Just wanted to make that clear.
It was a long night. Uh huh. Anybody else see anything? Okay, see and none. I'm going to take roll call. Dan?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Susanna?
Obstaining.
Okay. Janelle?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Retta?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. So that is eight yeses and one abstention. All right, so moving on to correspondence, Brian?
Uh, three, three pieces of good news tonight. Mr. Gross, can you please um mute Ellen? She's getting a lot of feedback. So we received an award letter for um two public school infrastructure projects. The first is a playground security fence at Maple Ave. So um the Board will recall, this is in an effort, um, a project that uh Governor Sununu had started a while back, and they've still continued to approve um some projects. So we've had two that have uh been approved most recently. Uh, our total cost, um, total approval for this is $20,920, and this will be a fence around the back um with a gate at Maple Ave. And we received another one, and this is one that uh Mr. Borget has been working on, and this was for soft phone clients, which will allow teachers to use their laptop as a phone. So when we think about a teacher in a remote environment or um being off-site, this would allow teachers to be able to make and receive phone calls through their computer, and it would come up um as Goffstown High School or Bartlett Elementary School. So it would actually, you know, be a recognizable um call that would come through. So I'd like to thank uh Mr. Giralliman and Mr. Borget for their efforts on those two things. And then the last one is yet more good news for the Goffstown School District. Um, Mrs. Kohler received uh notification from the New England League of Middle Schools just, uh, I think about a week or so ago, that Mountain View Middle School has been um identified as a spotlight school again. So the Board may recall, this is um an effort that I, I give Wendy absolutely all the credit. This was her vision. This was her idea to pursue this. The Board may recall, as part of our area agreement, Mountain View Middle School is required to be accredited through the New England Association of Schools and Colleges, and that wasn't quite good enough for Mrs. Kohler, being one of the few middle schools in the state, and she pursued um the spotlight school status. And we are one of seven um spotlight schools in the state of New Hampshire, and one of 28 throughout all of New England. So many thanks to Mrs. Kohler for her leadership on this, and uh this is just a terrific recognition. And in order to receive this, the school has to meet certain standards and really uh rises as an exemplar of middle-level education. So many thanks to uh to Mrs. Kohler, to her team, and the great teachers at Mountain View. This is a, a really nice recognition for everyone. Thank you, Wendy.
All right, that's awesome. Can you hear me? Can everybody hear me? Okay, good. All right, so commendations and good news. Anybody? Oh, Ginny, go ahead.
I received um Bartlett's newsletter, and I thought they did an excellent job in covering just about any question someone could have on that newsletter. So um kudos to them for doing a really good job. And um I noticed also that I've been trying to keep up to date with things that people were thinking in the community, and I've noticed that Kim has done an excellent job at answering questions as they come up on Facebook, so that um questions are answered immediately, so that they're not um, you know, getting to be bigger questions. And I think she's done an excellent job in jumping in and, and getting those questions taken care of um immediately. So kudos to both of them.
Thank you, Ginny. Does anybody else have anything? Oh, Ellen? Oh, and Brian. Go ahead, Ellen.
Ellen, you're muted.
Scott, can you unmute her?
No, he can't.
I cannot unmute from my end when it, they mute on that side. I can't.
Mr. Huff, Justin will help. Why don't I just uh speak briefly while, while Justin's helping her? I was just going to echo what Ginny said. Um, we've had a lot of MVPs throughout this process, but there's nobody better than Kim McCann. And just as an example of that, I received a number of parent emails over the weekend, Saturday night, Sunday morning, and I responded to parents, and Kim did as well. So we've had a, an awful lot of people that, that have stepped up, but um certainly Kim is the best of the best.
Thank you, Brian. I agree. Go ahead, Ellen.
Um, I've seen videos from Mountain View, which I thought were excellent, uh regarding how we're disinfecting and going to be cleaning and that type of thing, and the arrivals and departures. And uh Maple Ave has had a number of them up that I thought were excellent, helped the kids understand pickup and drop-off, and walking through the schools, and what it's going to be like when the kids get there, I thought were excellent. And then yesterday or today, there was one from the high school about what to expect when students first arrive. I thought it was very nicely done. So good job to everybody.
Great, thank you, Ellen. Yeah, it's definitely been a very nice thing. Everybody is looking for some communication, and they've been doing really well. Is there any other commendations and good news?
I would just share that any schools that haven't released their videos yet, they will be doing so. So we've got a couple of schools that are just finishing those up, and this is consistent with our communications plan as part of the reopening framework. What we've seen here and what you're witnessing is a shift from a, a centralized communication method where primarily the communication is coming directly from me to a decentralized, where each of the schools um are conducting all of their own communications around those pieces. So that's been uh very purposeful. The principals and their administrative teams have done a great job.
Great, thank you, Brian. All right, if there's no other commendations, good news, I'm going to move it on to, we have some presentations. The first is our athletics department. We have Justin Huff, who is our athletic director, and Mike Garrity is on Zoom. He is the assistant uh athletics director from the middle school. They're going to give us a presentation. Justin, you ready?
I believe so. Can you hear me?
I can. Mike, is it, everybody can hear him?
Actually, I think, yeah, a little.
Closer?
Mic check.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. All right, um, so pleasure to be here tonight. Um, so, Mr. Gross, do you have a slideshow you could help with? Um, so taking a look at high school athletics and co-curriculars for GHS uh for this fall. You know, wanted to start off with just kind of talking about the thought behind education-based athletics. My assistant, Mr. Gross, is struggling a little bit with the um, there we go. Uh, some of the sources of information we've used to gather this is the New Hampshire Safer at Home 2.0 amateur and youth sports guidelines. Those are from the Governor's Economic Reopening Task Force, the NFHS Guidance for Opening Up High School Athletics and Activities, the CDC Consideration for Youth Sports, the New Hampshire Athletic Directors Association Task Force, uh, the NHI AA Sports Medicine Task Force. Um, and that also now has two members from UNH, uh, Dr. Michael Ferrara. He's the Dean of the UNH College of Health and Human Services. He's on that task force, and they've recently added Josephine Porter, the Director of the Institute for Health Policy in Practice, who has also been on that task force, providing input to the state, and then other district uh school, other school district plans that we've been looking at through the state. So why education-based athletics? Um, you know, we want to prepare students for college, career, or military by extending the learning opportunities of the classroom, develop social, emotional, physical, and cognitive skills in an application setting, and that's really becoming more important than ever. Um, I would argue that application setting, where that's something that is unique to athletics and other co-curricular activities, and then developing the core values of accountability, commitment, excellence, responsibility, and sportsmanship. And these are things that we have believed in, uh, have been trying to, you know, live by and continue to do so. Now, with the present climate, I think uh this is a little bit of a dense slide, but I do think it's important, obviously, to what uh, what we're proposing, and I know a lot of the, the thinking that's going on out there. Um, at present, our region's current rates of infection with COVID are very low. Um, another fact is that sports have been taking place all summer in New Hampshire in various settings with no outbreaks. You're talking camps, you're talking uh, you know, travel baseball, lacrosse tournaments, ice hockey tournaments. Uh, many of our students will be playing sports somewhere this fall. And if the district doesn't offer athletics, pay-for-pay clubs will fill that void. We saw that happen over the spring and summer. And then the risk to student health would actually increase in that case, where participation likely extends by, beyond the state lines with club sports. And then when it comes to specific to, to our district, I would argue, um, that athletics has several built-in advantages in terms of risk mitigation. And this would go to people that, um, and I certainly understand the concerns about, you know, we do have things that we need to do to make uh education possible right now in, in this current climate. Um, athletics has some, some inherent advantages, I think. A big one is that all fall, all fall sports, uh, except for volleyball and cheer, um, are outdoors, and that we have the ability to move volleyball and cheer to an outdoor setting to begin the season. Uh, we have strong coach-to-player ratios. Players and coaches are united in a team-focused approach. So this is something where you might get better behavior in some senses and better compliance, especially from young people, when they had that kind of uh directed approach. There's inherent motivation and discipline along those same lines. And then a big part of it, too, is that family choice really drives the participation for students in athletics. Uh, did a list of uh different activity risk levels as they would apply to our setting. If you looked at the spring, what you were seeing uh Goffstown athletes doing was mostly skills and drills at home with family members. Uh, the next stage up from that, as far as a risk level, would be doing the same type of thing in small groups on campus. Uh, we have looked at starting to do a little bit of that over the summer. Um, another level of risk would be going a little bit larger with those groups. So it's a team-based practice with larger groups, some group mingling. Then you would go to intra-squad competition and scrimmaging. Next stage would then be going to full competition between teams from the same region, and then a step beyond that would be full competition between teams from different geographic regions. For our purposes, it all would be within the state of New Hampshire, but different regions within the state. So this is kind of a summary of where we've been. Um, July 13th, we started uh optional voluntary workouts for the summer. We did it outdoors only, one coach to nine players, um, specific guidelines in place. Uh, masks have been worn. They've all been provided with disinfectant and sanitizers. Um, and, you know, that ratio of one coach to nine athletes, nine students. So we did that through July 27th. Um, that was going well. We moved to Phase Two for this model, which is that some of those cohorts could now start to work together, and there would be limited use of shared equipment. So you might see um, you know, soccer balls being now kicked back and forth, a little bit of defender, defending an offensive player, you know, still with a little bit of space between them. And that's really where we've been up until the present time. So through the entire month of August, uh, our compliance has been good, from what I've seen. Um, I'm, you know, confident in that, and we have not had any um negative effects to this point. What we would uh be proposing is that we now move to what is Phase Three here, then leading into Phase Four. Uh, Phase Three would be official and mandatory team practices with tryouts at the beginning. Um, we would use the NHI AA start dates, which happened to be September 8th. With that being Election Day in town, uh, we would look to start our tryouts probably other than golf on September 9th. And then you would have some more uh typical practice where you would have some intra-squad activity. Should that go well, uh, two weeks later, we would be looking to start team competitions with other schools, and we have a regionalized uh cohort model that I'll show in a couple of slides. Uh, that's what's being discussed at the athletic director level right now at the state, and that's what we would be looking to do, at least for the regular season. Should that go well, we would then look to try to get to some type of postseason play. And I- And I think, my thinking is that at that point, before that time comes, we would come back to the board, review where we're at, and see if that that next step makes sense based on the information that we're seeing. So should we progress to this Phase Three? And again, I put the official season begins September 8th. That's the state deadline, the state date, rather. In Goffstown, it would be September 9th, other than golf. We would have tryouts and practices with the full program numbers. Our coaches would continue their daily protocols from this summer. Amongst them would be like daily attendance logs, which are very important should the need arise for contact tracing. You'd see full team workouts, skills, drills, scrimmaging. The hygiene habits and sanitizing from the summer workouts would continue. We would limit person-to-person contact as is practical while also preparing students for competition. There would be cleaning and sanitizing of balls and equipment after each practice. Scrimmages would be intra-squad only. You would have two weeks of that. And then we would be proposing to start what would be Phase Four here, inter-scholastic events. This would be planning as other schools in our region. This regionalized schedule would help us with our bus driver shortage. And we would also ask the board to consider allowing parents to transport their students to games whenever possible to also help with that shortage. In terms of spectators, we're proposing that attendance be limited to immediate family only for home games. All fans in attendance would be required to wear face coverings for the duration of the event. And we are already hearing that some of our opponents will not be allowing any visiting fans. So we would need to honor that policy when playing away games. Some of the protocols that we're looking at, so for game management in particular for home games, as stated, attendance would be limited to immediate family only. Spectators wearing face coverings. Fans that are not wearing face coverings will be prompted to do so. And failure to comply with that request would then result in a fan being asked to leave the contest. You know, should it get to that point, we may be forced to halt gameplay until that fan complies with their request or vacates the premises. You know, my experience in Goffstown, I haven't seen anything coming close to this and I wouldn't see this being an issue, but we do want to be clear about our intentions here as far as how we would be conducting our games here. We would continue our practice that we've been using this summer where we have the guardians and athletes monitoring their risk factors and symptoms prior to attending team activities. Daily attendance logs will be kept on file to support contact tracing should the need arise. And then student athletes that are not in school for a given day due to their hybrid or remote schedule must arrive at the practice site dressed and ready. They will not be in the building. They will not be using locker rooms. So we're gonna keep that. We are asking all coaches and athletes to arrive with a face covering and to wear it during all transitional periods and when physical distancing cannot be maintained. This would not pertain to during physical activity. So if they're out on the soccer field or field hockey playing, we would see players that are not wearing face masks at that time. And all equipment used will be cleaned and disinfected at the conclusion of all athletic sessions. We've been doing that in the summer and we can carry that over in the fall. For the scheduling protocols, this gives a look at kind of what we would be, what's been discussed at the state level. This is not something that is a definite thing yet, and this is an example here, obviously. But I want to give people an idea of what we'd be talking about. So it's almost like it's a, if you pictured a homecoming each week. So we would have one opponent and we're gonna play that one other school, one other district for that week. So you know, Week One was Goffstown against Mayberry. You would see on Monday, boy soccer playing at Mayberry. And on Monday, girls soccer playing at Goffstown with Mayberry coming to Goffstown. Tuesday would be field hockey, Goffstown at Mayberry, and volleyball, Mayberry at Goffstown. And then it would kind of flip so that you'd see boy soccer, girl soccer, field hockey, volleyball playing potentially twice a week. And then you would see cross-country one time a week and football one time a week on the, you know, Friday or Saturday as is appropriate. So that would kind of limit exposure, obviously, between statewide. And it would greatly enhance our ability to contact tracing should that need arise. For home games, locker rooms would be closed on game days. Visiting athletes will not have access. They will be, visiting athletes will be required to have face coverings. They must be warned during all transitional movements while on campus. The visiting team will conduct screenings so that anybody arriving to a GHS home event must have been cleared by their home school. We will not have concessions during home events. And we will ask fans to remain at least six feet away from each other unless residing in the same residence. For away games, all student athletes must be screened in accordance to the home team's requirements prior to boarding the bus. So this is an agreement we would have in place with other athletic directors and other districts where we verify that all of our athletes are, have been screened before getting on the bus. If that involves a temperature check as per that team that we're playing that day, that's what we would do. All athletes and staff must wear face coverings while riding on the bus to all games and contests. Masks should be worn while on the host school's campus, removing them for warmups and competition only. There will be no stopping on the way back from an away game contest for food. This will be a disappointment to some. But this is what we are willing to do to try to get the fall sports season off the ground. Athletes and coaches are encouraged to bring their own food and drink. For middle school athletics, we're gonna have Mountain View kind of mirror what GHS is doing and the Tri-County League is going to mirror the NHI AA in terms of the athletics. Our proposal would also be to start them in Phase Three on September 9th. Phase Three, again, just a reminder, is the official mandatory team practices. Now, most of the Mountain View teams or none of the teams, some of the players may have been doing some things, but they have not been doing the voluntary workouts like we do this summer. So they would look to start with team tryouts and practices. Do scrimmaging, intra-squad stuff only there. And then the schedules would follow that same idea of the regionalized cohorts. To be completely honest, we do not yet have those schedules in place. The Athletic Directors Association right now is waiting for schools to come online to be verified as being in. And then just wanted to make a note that transportation issues may impact the ability of Mountain View to play a full schedule. And then also wanted to address non-athletic co-curriculars. We're proposing that co-curricular groups at GHS be able to meet following the district guidelines for academic classes. So this would be if you pictured student government, FBLA-type group wanting to meet. They would need to follow those same procedures, the same guidelines. We are also gonna ask that if they're meeting indoors, that they be finished and out of the building by 4:00 PM so that our cleaning staff has adequate time. And we would also encourage these groups to meet outdoors and to utilize remote options to the extent possible. And then just in closing, I'd say this is not, I would not say that this is zero risk at all. I think there are, there are levels of risk. I think people are aware of that. And I think this is something where our families have kind of have asked for this. Students have been attending summer workouts and have been very well behaved. And I think that what they're looking for is the opportunity here to try to progress to the next stage and see where we're going. But at that point, I would ask for any, any questions.
Thank you, Justin. Go ahead, Brian.
If I could, if I could just chime in, first of all, Mr. Huff and Mr. Garrity, thank you for your work on this. Mr. Garrity is our middle school athletic director. He's also on the call if anyone had any questions specific to Mountain View. I would say this has my full endorsement. I have gone through this in great length. Justin has been very patient with me. I would share very directly with the board that I was hesitant on supporting athletics. However, as we have seen the extensive work that the NHI AA has done as well as Athletic Director Huff, I am comfortable with what we're presenting here this evening. I think it is considerably safer than kids participating in other types of athletics that they certainly would. Mr. Gross, I would ask you to chime in as well. We have a number of policies that I would want to just reference. Scott, do you have that information that you're ready to share? So we would have, we would have a number of policies that pertain to transportation and athletics. And those policies will need some amendment and some alteration for this. Scott?
Sure. You know, one of the concerns that we have, and Justin raised it, was the notion of bus driver shortages. And that's gonna impact just regular transportation, much less athletic or co-curricular transportation. So what you see on your screen here are six policies that more than likely, these impact all student transportation, not just athletics or co-curricular. And what I wanted to highlight here was that in this past March, you gave the superintendent of schools authority under policy EBCF to modify and to adapt policy as needed. And I think, but this demonstrates to me is, you know, the need why you have that policy. These six, these six transportation policies will all probably need some modest adjustment as we proceed with, you know, with COVID-19 on our response to it.
Mr. Gross, I think you meant to share your screen.
Oh, I'm sorry.
While, while you're doing that, I would also just say that another impact of this is that we will have to make some changes to our student handbooks as well as our athletic handbook.
All right. So if you can see the screen now, and I apologize for that. What I want to highlight here is that in response to COVID-19, the transportation of students may be impacted by a variety of factors, including but not limited to public health and safety, bus driver shortages, consolidation of bus routes, and the inability to provide athletic and co-curricular transportation at all grade levels. So again, I believe that these policies might be subject to modification as we proceed. And then lastly, if the board is inclined to proceed with the recommendation of Athletic Director and the superintendent, I would strongly suggest that as part of your motion that you also consider a waiver, a temporary waiver of policy EEBC, which is transportation for school-sponsored events. That policy requires the student to go on a, on a bus to go to an athletic event or a school-sponsored event. The waiver would allow students, if they're, if they can drive, they could drive themselves. But if they, obviously, they don't have a license, it would be their parent or guardian would, would take them to that. The other thing that I, so this is one thing that I believe that you should be thinking about with, with your decision. And then the other thing that I wanted to show you is that, and Justin, I'm not sure if you touched upon this during your presentation, but almost all schools in the NHIAA have had some sort of a waiver of liability, assumption of risk policy, and they've had their student athletes or students participating in co-curriculars sign off on a, on this waiver. And I believe you got a copy of it. If not, I can send it to you. But this is essentially what these student athletes or those in co-curriculars would be signing off on. Again, it's, it's an acknowledgement that there are, there are risks if they were to proceed forward. And again, it holds more or less the district harmless in terms of if these individuals were to, you know, to sustain any type of illness, et cetera, as a result of it. So that's, those are the two things that, as your business administrator, I would request of you is that if you do approve this, that you would mandate the, that the participants sign the waiver, which is what most other schools are doing, and we're already doing it in practice right now, as well as the waiver of the transportation policy.
And Mr. Gross, just to clarify, you had that waiver completed by Matt Snyder?
Yes.
Who is one of our attorneys from Soloway and Hollis.
Right. So our school district's council has, he reviewed the waiver. And this waiver, Justin, has been one that's been, kind of been used throughout the state. And Matt made some modest adjustments to it, but this is what our district council recommends that student athletes and those participating in co-curriculars would sign off on.
All right. Thank you, Scott. So at our August 3rd meeting, we talked about waiting to make a decision on sports until after school started. But Brian and Justin and Mike came up with this presentation and wanted to give us information tonight. It's up to the board if you want to make a decision tonight or if you want to talk and make a decision September 14th. But this is the time to ask any question on the presentation. So I see Ellen's hand and I see Jared's hand. Ellen, do you want to go first?
I'd like to make a motion, but I don't want to pull off three more.
Yeah, we're not ready for a motion yet. I want to let people first ask questions. Jared, go ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. A few questions, and I can just ask one and we can move on or however we want to go through it. But with concessions being closed and still having fans from the immediate family, are they going to be allowed to bring their own food in, especially for little ones that I know will probably need to eat food, you know, every couple hours?
Yeah. My thinking is yes. Really, the concession's being closed is an effort to prevent people from congregating. So certainly bringing in food for themselves and their, and their young ones wouldn't go against the spirit of that. So.
Thank you. My next question is, do athletes that are not in game, so those that are on the sidelines or waiting to participate, are we looking at them having their masks on during those periods? So only mask-offs would be for those students that are in game at that moment?
That would be where I would lean. I, I would be, you know, curious to hear what other people think. I'll tell you that, you know, we'll call it research, but I was watching some high school football games on TV over the weekend. And I did notice that in the games, you'll see the players are not wearing the masks under the helmets. But on the sidelines, they're fully suited up and you do see that they have the face mask on. So they've kind of figured out a way that, and I was actually talking today with some people about trying to troubleshoot that and how can you do that? So possibly even affixing their face mask to a water bottle which has their name and it's a designated station. This is kind of the world we're all living in now. So I think yes, I think it's, I'm saying that it is doable and I think that would be probably best practice. I would say that the coaches have the masks. I did see them down quite a bit while they're coaching, talking into mics. My thinking is that if we're outdoors, I'm confident in that when they're standing still and near others, they're wearing the mask when they're engaged in physical activity and running around. I would not see them wearing the masks.
Great. Just a statement, if I may.
Go ahead.
Looking at the individual policies that I know that we mentioned, you know, I would just remind the superintendent that we did give you broad authority to modify policies from meeting to meeting. And I would imagine that these policy modifications that are being asked for are inherent to that broad authority that you're given. So I would not be in favor of voting for a motion to amend a policy on transportation as you've already received that, just as my statement.
Okay. Thank you, Jared. Go ahead, Brian.
I would agree with that, Jared. What we wanted to do was to just bring to the board your attention of our intent to modify those policies. But I would concur as well as modifying school handbooks. So school handbooks as well as policies consistent with what Mr. Gross shared would all need some alteration.
And I thank the administration for continuing, knowing that you have that authority, that you're providing that update to us on a regular basis. Greatly appreciated.
Thank you, Jared. Ginny, I see your hand up. Go ahead.
I think that sports are terribly important. But I'm really nervous in going by the Little League field recently several times and seeing the stands filled with people sitting right next to each other with no stands with no masks on and boys hanging on the fences right next to each other. So are we really going to have monitors in our bleachers so that those things are not gonna happen? And this is talking to myself and my ears are running nuts. So I'm just wondering, are we, who are going to be those monitors to make sure that our stadium is safe? And we're not having arguments and stuff about masks and things that we're requiring for people to be safe?
Let me field that question and then I can let Justin respond as well. I do want to make it clear that what you see in other locations, other fields, is not going to be what's permitted here. So for example, if there are fields that have fans sitting together congregating, they're not socially distancing, they're not wearing masks, that is not what's gonna happen at our schools. And some families may disagree with that respectfully. Don't come watch the game. So we're gonna create a culture that this is the expectation when we start at work. When we started workouts over the summer, I told Justin, it's only going to take one team to screw it up. And we'll pull the plug on everything. So I do want to be clear, kids want to play, we want them to play, but these are the expectations. And people who don't can, um, comply with this, they won't be able to participate or to be present.
Okay, and who will the monitors be?
So, um, we, we have game management staff, um, and that's always been the case. Uh, you know, I'm proud of the fact that in my experience at Goffstown, we really haven't had. A lot for them to do at a lot of the games. Um, this may be a case where there's more to do. I would echo Brian's thoughts though, and, uh. It's funny, just going back to the spring, even when we first started here and other schools were offering these voluntary workouts. They were reporting, you know, we're hearing from these other schools saying, you know, it's amazing how many kids are coming to these things and. Their attitudes are great and they're, uh, they're following instructions and, you know, we were not one of the first ones to do this. Uh, we were actually a little late to the game, which I think was, was smart. Um, so the, the amount of cooperation that we've had and motivation from these kids to kind of. Tow the line and to do what is necessary for them to be able to play. Has made an impression on me and has made me a little more comfortable in going forward with this. Uh, we do have adult staff that will be working at these games, um, as we have in the past. We do have like, um, in that progression I laid out in the, the game management protocols. It could get to the point where, you know, it's first, it's a conversation, it's a request, you know, we need you to put your mask on. If that's not somebody you live with, we need you to have some social distance. Uh, if the request is not really followed, then it's going to get to the next level, which is. All right, if you don't comply with this, we're going to have to halt the game and ask you to leave. And at that point, we would hope they would comply, and if they don't, then. The game's going to be sitting there and you're going to have a bunch of athletes standing on the field, looking at somebody, somebody's immediate family who's not letting them play.
Okay.
I don't see it getting to that point in Goffstown.
I, I, I don't either, Justin. And who does it start with? It starts with our students. The kids, if we set the expectation, we empower kids to take leadership roles. They will police themselves, they will monitor themselves, and they will tell their parents and any spectators what the expectations are. And so the only, the only way that I've been supportive of, of athletics is with the safety provisions in place.
Thank you, Brian. Jenny, do you have anything else?
Yeah, there was just one other thing. I think I'm a little concerned with the screenings being done at home before. Um, it's been having athletes in my family. I know that they're not always willing to say. That they're not feeling well before a game because then they won't get to play. So, um, I'm kind of concerned that you won't always get the best screening at one done at home. Your thoughts?
That's a very good point.
We, we certainly would have the ability to do our own screening. So we have enough touchless, uh, thermometers, we can do that, we can go through our attestation process. But again, it's a global pandemic and parents need to step up. They need to make sure they're not sending to kids to school when they're sick. This is not the time to give your kid a shot of Motrin and send him to school. So we need to make sure that everyone is paying attention to the, to the expectations in order to be on campus.
Are you good, Jenny?
I have one other thing. I mean, sorry to be a pain in the neck, but.
No, go ahead.
I have one other thing. Um, watching students, um, pick up their mouth guards off the ground. Share it with another person who's lost theirs. Um, what are we going to do to make sure face guards are not happening in that same fashion?
Uh, so that's going to start, I would say with, again, a little bit of culture, but it's really going to be the coach setting the tone. And, uh, you know, I have a lot of trust in our fall coaches, uh, they've done a great job here. Um, so it would start there and I think just kind of getting that ingrained into them that this is the way we are doing things. Um, I don't think we're fighting this battle alone. I, I think they're, the kids are starting to, to. Get the gravity of the situation is what I'm seeing over the summer. Uh, like you talk about the mouth guards in particular, um, now we're talking about those are going to be, you know, affixed to face masks and, uh. They're actually not requiring face, uh, mouth guards this year for soccer for that reason partially. Um, because that, it's a very good point. Um, so it's, that would be a tell, I would guess, is you would see us hopefully with. The coaching in place and the right culture where that's not something that would be happening right now.
Okay. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. Um, Justin, I just had one question or a couple of questions for you. You mentioned. Buses may or may not happen, um, that especially with middle school, that may affect a parent deciding. Whether their child's going to play sports or not. Do we know if we will definitely not have buses? Or are we still trying to figure that out?
I would say we're still trying to figure that out at this point. Um, we are down drivers, uh, we know that going in. I would, my hope is that once we get schedules finalized. We'll see where it is and I, the travel will not be to the extent that it has been in years past. So there might be some ways to make this work. Uh, it may require more flexibility than we've done in the past, um. And, you know, the scheduling will vary a little bit more than it has in the past, but staying local should help. I, I just, I don't have a guarantee for you, so I wanted to put that in there, um. Because it's, it's a good point. Um, I don't know if, Mike, are you seeing anything different at the middle school level?
Is Mike there?
There.
Uh, yeah, it's, it's, we've had this issue for a couple of years now with transportation. It's, it's just a shortage of drivers and it's just, um, working with the bus company. Is that, is all we can do. I mean, we've had to reschedule games in the past because there was not enough buses and, you know, we, we did what we had to do. Um, and I don't see it being any different this year.
Okay, I just don't want a, a child to not be able to play because they can't get there by a parent, that's all. Um, and co-curriculars was mentioned for the high school. Is it gonna be at the middle school as well? Are you hoping, would that be part of this motion to approve co-curriculars at the middle school?
We haven't.
Want me to address that?
Yeah, please, Wendy.
Hi, Heather, so.
Hi, Wendy, thank you.
No problem. So yes, we are going to be looking to start our co-curriculars at Mountain View as well. Ordinarily, we don't start things like student government and things like that until the end of September or beginning of October anyways. Um, but we would be looking for that same approval for the middle school.
Okay, great, thank you, Wendy.
No problem.
Jared, I know you had a question or a statement?
Yeah, just, just as a question, uh, question for the, the administration. Knowing that we've had students, um, through the summer, get ready for their camps, you know, the skills camps or whatever, working together. Are we looking to co-locate the players on a team into the same module to a Monday, Wednesday schedule or Tuesday, Thursday? Because I would think that we would not want to have a team of individuals, some are on Monday and some are on Tuesday. And if somebody gets sick, it really does disintegrate the issue of trying to keep people apart to contact trace. So I guess my question is, with people signing up for teams, are we looking to co-locate them or co? Um, put them in the same cohort for a Monday, Wednesday slash Tuesday, Thursday schedule?
Justin, you want to field that?
I, I think at the high school, um, I can see Kim McCann, McCann's head exploding as we speak. Um, it, it, uh, it's pretty involved, uh, it's a valid point for sure. And that is kind of what, uh, what is happening in all honesty is that at two forty-one, um. We are leaving school and now things are a little bit different. So. The other thing I would say though is that we don't know what any of these kids are doing necessarily when they're leaving the building. Um, if they're doing Goffstown High School Athletics, Mountain View Athletics, we know who they're with. We know when they're where, we can do contact tracing, we can do all that stuff and we'll have records of that. Uh, whereas if they're going to a job, if they're going, uh, and, and hanging out and socializing outside of, outside of school athletics, we don't really have that, that knowledge.
Great, thank you, Justin.
So Jared, we would allow that. So if you're playing soccer. If you're on the Monday, Wednesday cohort or you're on the Tuesday, Thursday cohort, you would be mixing with your cohort. And you would also be mixing with the soccer team or the volleyball team or the golf team or whatever it would be. We would know who those people are, we would have the ability to do contact tracing, but they would be part of it as well.
Are you good, Jared?
So I, I just want to make sure I understand. So if we have somebody on Monday. That, that goes to school on Mondays, that plays soccer. They get sick, they've transmitted to their people that are also playing soccer, that is part of the Tuesday and Thursday cohorts. So we have that potential with this game plan. We're not looking to take sports teams and put them into the same cohort. We're going to maintain the Monday, Tuesday, the, the already existing schedules that we have.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jared. Tim, I saw your hand up. Did you want to say something?
Yeah, I did. Thank you, Heather.
You're welcome.
You know, I'm just going to repeat what I had said on the marathon meeting at the beginning of the month here. I think if we're going to have sports, this has to be an automatic trigger to push us to phase three. Any other way we're trying to do this and I, I believe the presentation was sound. But it still is trying to have our cake and eat it too, and I just don't see that as a possibility. When we're telling kids, just like what Mr. Huff just said, you know, two forty-one happens. Anything else can happen after there, it's a totally different ballgame. It's hypocritical. So if we're going to have sports, we have to have phase three. I will not be voting in favor of this presentation unless we are having a bump to phase three.
Okay, thank you, Tim.
But let's be clear what he's saying.
Yes, go ahead, Brian.
We're talking about two different phase threes.
Right, I am talking about the education phase three, not the sports phase three. Thank you, Brian.
Okay, well, just, just to be clear with that, Tim, um, we, uh, so if, if the board concurs with Tim. Then we, um, we're not ready to move to phase three. So I want to be clear. And I would not recommend moving to phase three until we have successfully implemented phase two.
In my response to that would be if we're not ready to go to phase three, then we're not ready for sports.
Alright, thank you, Tim. Does anybody else have any questions, statements? Dan, are you going to say something?
I'd, I'd like to.
Yeah, go ahead.
I don't agree with Tim. I have heard the presentation tonight and I think it's a solid plan. I believe the risk. For a Monday, Wednesday versus intermingling with a sports Tuesday, Thursday. Is a very small subset of the entire. School pupil population. Um, going to a complete educational phase three. Would increase the risk exponentially. So I don't agree. With the, the term that you used, Tim, and that's why I'm speaking, because I think you used the term hypocritical. And I have to come against that term in, in a vote that I may have here.
Thank you, Dan. Okay, so we have a presentation, um, everybody. Yeah, Janelle, are you trying to say something?
Yes, I'm sorry, trying to, uh.
I didn't see your hand, sorry.
Sorry about that. Um, I just had a quick question about, uh, we had a similar question when we were talking about, uh, moving between phases. In school, I was curious, what would be the catalyst to? Help us move from phase to phase in this, in this presentation?
So my thinking is that we would be proposing phase three, which then would go right to four if there are no hiccups. Um, what we would certainly be looking for is should a cluster or an outbreak happen, um, you know, the three cases is a big one. But really anything we do is going to be informed by D H H S and conferring with them, and then obviously I would be on the phone with Brian pretty quickly at that point.
So basically the, uh. Looking to the, to them to make that decision sort of for us, moving between phases like forward or backwards?
I'm sorry, you're right, I jumped the gun a little bit there. Um. So, right, we, go ahead, Brian.
If I could just jump in, when I give my superintendent's report, I'm going to speak to moving between phases of our educational platform. So that's something that I'm planning to speak to, so that might be, um, more what Janelle is asking for athletics. I just want to make sure we're not confusing. We have two different phase threes on the table.
Yeah, I'm talking about athletics here, Brian.
Okay, sorry.
Maybe I should have used a word other than phase because I can see how this is confusing me. Um, so we're asking that, we, we've been in what, in my presentation, I defined as phase one and then phase two. Uh, the proposal is that we, uh, you know, attempt to move to, to phase three. Which is packaged with phase four, because if phase three goes well, that would be practices in preparation of a season, which would begin with phase four.
Thank you.
And then just to add on to that, before you went to phase five, we would get an update. And make an approval whether we were ready to go to phase five, correct?
Correct, because that's the next risk where you are playing out of, potentially out of region teams.
Right, okay. Jenny? Um, how many districts have approved sports in the state of New Hampshire at this point?
Total districts, I think we're over thirty now, um, in division one, which is the one we're tracking mostly. Uh, it is right now fourteen teams are in. Um, no teams are not playing any sports. There are a couple that are doing some sports and not others. Um, or that have limited their geographic region.
Okay, and the other, um, thing that I would like to ask is if there is a school district that. Has an, uh, high or town that has a high incidence of COVID, would we not play that town's team? I mean, is there some way to balance that so we knew that if that wasn't really a good place to be? Um, that we weren't going to, um. To play a team that was having issues in their town?
Yeah, it's been something we certainly had discussed. Um, my comfort level would be at that point, honestly, talking to Brian. And kind of conferring at that point, looking at the data and making a decision that way. Um, I would not be comfortable making the call myself, but it would very much be something that we are going to be tracking each week.
But you would be sure to know what town was where as far as their rates were?
Correct, and we would be looking to use this regional cohort model where we have a, one town or one district that we're playing for that week. So in advance of that week, we would talk to that district, we would talk, I would talk to the athletic director. If Brian wanted to talk to their superintendent, we could do that as well. Uh, and so that's how I would kind of see that playing out.
And make the choice as you go along?
Yes.
Okay.
The H I double A has been very, uh. Loosening of, of, uh, contingencies here. They're talking open tournaments at the end of the season. They're removing any requirements on that you need to play X amount of games in order to play in a tournament at the end of the year. Very much it's focused on just trying to, to get kids out there playing. I think if we do that, it's a win. So we're really trying to take that next step and just to see, you know, if summer's gone well, take that next step. Uh, and we're, you know, the tournament is what it is. The, the rules have kind of been lifted as far as you have to play a minimum amount of games. The focus more than ever is really just on getting the kids out there playing.
Okay, thank you. Alright, thank you, Jenny. Susanna, you have something? Go ahead.
I have one question. How do you define immediate family? What would be just one parent, both parents, or?
My thought is that it's, uh, both parents, anybody living in the household. Uh, would be the way to start. Uh. I'll certainly be willing to, to field calls and requests from there. Uh, the, obviously the overall thing we're trying to do is to, to cut down the numbers. Uh, the biggest thing would be, uh, you know, we're not going to have students there, we're not going to have a, a student section at our games. Um, so I think that'll be a big part of it. Um, I'm not looking in all honesty to go up and. Interview people to see if they're really the father, not the uncle or what have you. Um. And one other thing we may be looking at is some sort of digital ticketing where you could then, uh. Contact the, the student directly could have two tickets and it's, uh, kind of like being a professional athlete where you get to. Give out your two tickets for the game to, you know, whoever you choose. It's two people there and, and so be it.
Thank you. Thank you, Susanna. And Justin, GTV records a lot of these games, correct?
They sure do. I'm glad you brought that up. Um, you know, we, we have, I think without a doubt, the, the best network in the state as far as what GTV has done already for our games. Uh, well over a hundred games last couple of years. So for people that can't make it to the games, um, I, I think Goffstown people probably know this better than others and. You're going to see other districts trying to catch up to, to where we kind of are with that. Um, I would say the vast majority of our games will be viewable for anybody who wants to view them. Mostly live, uh, a lot of them with color commentary, um. You know, the, the, obviously the football color commentary guy is not very good at his, at kind of how he does it, but I wouldn't hold that against, uh. The GTV operation as a whole, I think does a great job. And, uh, we would, we would want families to be able to enjoy what their students are doing. And that may come into play when the, you know, if we go to another school and their policy is no visiting fans. Um, so we'll be able to offer that, uh, the board, I believe, had purchased a, one of those remote broadcasters too, where now we have the ability to broadcast remotely live. From another district. Um, so that's kind of another, uh, advantage that, uh, that people of Goffstown would have.
Right, thank you, Justin. So, we've, do you have a question, Ellen? Okay. Um, so we've talked a lot about this, we have a great presentation. I know Brian and our athletic director. I know Brian and our athletic director would like an answer tonight so they can move forward, but I am leaving it up to you guys. If you're ready to make a decision, we can entertain a motion. If you're not, and you need to think about it, then we could put it on the agenda for September fourteenth. All right, so I'm hearing nothing, so I'm assuming we're gonna, is somebody saying something?
This is Janelle.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, I, I would like personally to move it to September fourteenth. I don't know how the rest of the board is feeling.
Um, I think you're the only one that feels that way. I'm looking around, I don't see anybody else saying anything, and I think...
This is Tim.
Yeah, go ahead, Tim. To wait till September fourteenth?
Yep.
Okay. Jared, go ahead. Oh, wait, hang on a second, Dan. Jared had his hand up.
I, I think Dan and I may have asked the same question, but if we delay this motion to September fourteenth, how does that affect us? Currently moving from Phase Two to Phase Three and, you know, eventually Phase Four.
All right, go ahead, Justin.
Um, for athletics, unfortunately, it would, uh, it would probably put us in a situation where we're without a schedule. Um, the Division One athletic directors have been slow to, uh, come up with schedules. They're trying to wait for all the schools to declare being in, but this is the, the final week of that. So on Thursday, we're meeting, um, and putting together schedules, because we've had to kind of blow up the schedules that were put together in the previous spring for the fall. Um, so my concern would be if we waited till September fourteenth for a vote. At that point, all the other districts have approved and are playing. Um, they've, they've got to get their schedules done, so they would have already kind of moved on without us.
Okay, thank you, Justin.
And just to be clear, that's the reason that we pushed, um, to bring this to the board this evening. So we originally had thought that we would have a little more time, that there would be more scheduling within the first two weeks of September. It would be my preference to open schools to have a, um, a couple of weeks in before we had to make this commitment, but that was the piece that swayed me, was that, um, basically, with the districts that have already made decisions to move forward with athletics, they will be doing so, um, without us.
Thank you, Brian. Dan, did you want to make a comment?
Uh, Jared's comment was accurate. We had the same question.
Okay. All right, so I know Ellen has her hand up. Um, go ahead, Ellen.
I move that we approve the start of athletics and co-curriculars as approved, as presented, excuse me.
All right, thank you, Ellen. Do I have a second? Uh, Ginny, you're seconding? Okay. Um, Janelle, I saw your hand up. Did you want to make another comment before I do roll call?
Um, I just had a question, so if, if, um, the other districts make up their schedules without us, are you saying that we will not be able to play, or we'll just have a tougher time getting schedules situated?
I've never been through this before, so I, I couldn't really tell you for sure. Um, I would tell you, you know, being an athletic director and, and seeing that the other schools have approved, they gotta, they have to take care of themselves, so they would have to make all their schedules. So I don't think we would have a schedule. Uh, it's potential that, like, if, uh, something opens up, a team has to drop out or something, maybe we could get a game later in the season. Uh, so I don't want to overstate that, but my understanding would be that we would not be able to really play if we didn't move forward at this point.
Can, can I also add to that, Justin? The model that they're using for scheduling is completely different than anything we've ever done before, using that kind of, uh, homecoming type model, where you would be scheduling all athletic contests with one specific school for that week. If the, uh, if the districts in, um, in our region are going forward with that kind of a model, we would miss that opportunity. That, and, and really, I apologize to board members, it was, um, I had said in August that I thought we could have a couple of weeks in the beginning of September, but the, um, obviously, the, the events are moving fast and furiously, and at this point, I just want to make sure that if we are in support of athletics, that we don't miss the window.
Thank you, Brian. Jared, I saw your hand.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I'm looking at our prior meeting minutes, and I, I just know I see that we're always looking at, you know, keeping our kids safe, you know, ensuring that we're doing the best we can for socially distance. And I agree that sports is important. It, it, it really helps an individual grow and mature and have the discipline, not only working with the team or individual, but the self-discipline that's needed. However, knowing that we've voted, and again, approved the meeting minutes, to talk about how important it is for our students to be safe, I look at it as irresponsible and inconsistent with what we've done in the past to have these individuals in different cohorts conducting collision activities on a sports field, trading spit, trading sweat, then going back into their irrespective or respective cohorts of Monday and Tuesday, and be able to potentially transmit and pass those, uh, those, uh, items on. Therefore, as it's presented with our current situation, I'll be voting no for this.
Okay, thank you, Jared. Tim, I saw your hand up.
Thank you, Jared, and that's exactly my point. It's hypocritical in the past to say we're going to treat student safety as a priority, but then to Jared's point, have them out on the gridiron, banging heads. I mean, ultimately, I would feel comfortable with this, and Brian said it himself. If we're not ready for Phase Three, right, the school district is not ready for Phase Three, my point is, why are we going to put them out on the field? So if we're going to put them out onto the field, that tells me we're comfortable with the precautions we have in place. Let's go to Phase Three. I, I view it as we're trying to have our cake and eat it too, and that's why I'm voting no.
All right, thank you, Tim. Go ahead, Brian.
So just, just to be clear, in moving to Phase Three of reopening, we're talking about adding in additional time for students on campus. I do want to be clear that in our, I'm getting the echo again. Um, in our elementary schools, they are all overcrowded. Elementary schools are one of the biggest driving factors of why we're opening in Phase Two. So I do just want to make that clear. The other piece I'd say is, these fall sports are all outdoors. That is a, um, significant factor. What we know about the transmission and the transmissibility of COVID is there is very little evidence of any COVID being spread outdoors when people are taking appropriate precautions, even football. This, this is one that I, I originally was against but have come around on. Two linemen across from each other are there for a, uh, probably five to, five to eight second, um, interval before the snap. There is, um, no guarantee. There is risk associated with all of this. And I will say, I would anticipate, um, if you approve moving into Phase Three and Phase Four of Mr. Huff's athletic plan, this does not, um, carry into the next season. Let's talk about the next season. Let's talk about winter sports. Basketball, wrestling, you're, you're talking about a number of athletics that I think are considerably higher risk due to them being indoors. Even volleyball, we're doing volleyball outside. Spirit is going to be outside. So the transmissibility of COVID-19 occurring outside and the unlikelihood of that occurring is why I support this. So I, I do appreciate what you're saying in terms of being able to move on to Phase Three of our reopening, but so much of that has to do with our elementary numbers, our ability to maintain a workforce, um, all the other factors, successfully opening as we're currently scheduled before we move on to the next phase. So I, I did just want to, um, provide that insight, that that's, um, that's my perspective.
Thank you, Brian. Jared, go ahead.
No, and Mr. Superintendent, I, I completely understand what you're saying, and, and I don't want, I, I don't want this board to think that I'm agreeing with him to say that we need to move academically to a Phase Three. All that I'm saying is that we have the potential, or we are, we knowingly are going to be cross-contaminating our modules. What I would ask our administration to do is to potentially look at taking all of our sports teams and putting them into the same module. So whether it's football on Tuesday, soccer on Monday, or to put any activities that the student athletes have to be 100% remote to protect their others. I, I'm not in favor of going to a academic Stage Three, but I want to ensure that we have the consistency that's been established in pass by our meeting minutes to talk about why we're doing the cohorts, especially at the middle and high school level.
Thank you, Jared.
Heather?
So is, okay, hang on one second, Dan.
Thank you.
Is, is that even possible? I know we're trying to do by...
It, it's not, it's not possible. So at this point, schedules are made. We don't even know who's going to try out for some of these teams. Um, so if that was a provision of the board, we would not be able to honor that. In which case, if you're telling me that we would need to have that, then we would recommend not moving forward with athletics.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Dan, I know you had your hand up.
Thank you, Heather. Given that sports activities will be an option that would be opted in, the risk factor being signed off by parents. This is something that is an option. I am in favor of allowing parents the option. So if they want to have an optional work, that's okay. When we're talking about perhaps cross-contamination between the cohorts and the days, we don't know where kids go on a Monday night or a Tuesday night. They could be more cross-contaminated than we know because we can see them playing sports. So I, I can't side with that right now, because that, that's not swaying me. So my vote would be right now in the affirmative, because it gives parents the option.
Thank you, Dan. Okay, we have a, okay, go ahead, Ginny.
Also, like I said, um, previous to this, that I have been reading a lot on Facebook just to see where people in the community are and, and what they're thinking. And I see that a lot of, um, kids are playing sports right now in all different kinds of teams. And I know from my own kids playing sports, um, AAU teams play all over the place. And if we don't have sports, I'm afraid the kids are going to be doing those kinds, continuing doing those kinds of sports. And they're playing in a lot of different places, a lot of different states. Um, and I think if they want to be, um, active in sports, that probably this is going to be a much safer place for them to do it. And I think if we don't offer it, um, they are going to do those kinds of things, which are going to make our kids much less safe and bring things back to our school that we don't want to have do. So, just my thoughts.
Thank you, Ginny. So, oh, go ahead, Rhonda.
Uh, and I, I just need a, um, one question answered for clarification. So what, what we have on the table right now to vote on, is this just for the, this upcoming semester for the, the fall term? This is not, we're not talking winter?
No, this is just for sports. Um, co-curricular for both schools for the fall, or is that for the whole year?
For the fall, because right now it has a contingency where we're asking them to be outdoors or vacate the building by four, and I can't predict what it'll look like that far forward.
Okay.
Um, and it's only asking for, again, just the summer's gone well, we have data that there's been kids that behaved themselves, no, no issues with COVID for summer workouts, so we're just looking to take the next step. And we'll come back to the board, should there be a time where now we've been playing games, and now we want to go and play teams outside of our region. That would be a, a separate request.
Okay, so it would be fall for both sports and co-curricular? So before we moved for winter, we would have another presentation for both, not just sports, but co-curricular as well?
Yes.
Okay, and, um, does that answer your question, Rhonda? Okay, so we've talked a lot about this. I have a motion, I have a second. Scott is texting me that in the motion, it needs to also say that parents and, um, students who voluntarily participate in sports and co-curriculars must sign a waiver of liability. What was that? He wants it in the first motion. So you would need to amend your motion.
Okay. I move the amendment, yes, I move that the start of athletics and co-curricular go forward as planned, including the other...
Okay, and Ginny, you second that? All right, so before I take a roll call, last time, anybody?
Heather?
Yes, go ahead, Janelle.
Sorry. Um, this might be a bigger, big question. I'm going to try to free, freeze it properly. Um, in the event that there was an outbreak in school, and say we decided, this is all hypothetical, say we decided to go full remote for the safety of our students. I'm assuming that the sports would follow suit?
Yes.
Stop all sports?
I, I, it, a, a hypothetical is a little bit of a challenge, but yes, if we had a situation that we had to close schools, athletics would absolutely, um, be stopped.
I assume so. And secondly, um, I was curious about, um, when we look at, I know, again, this is looking a little bit forward, but it's just helping me kind of think through this a little bit. Um, in the winter sports, so say in the fall that we got to, like, Phase Four or Five with fall sports. When we start winter sports, that wouldn't put us in Phase Five with winter sports, right? We would start lower, or would we stay in Phase Five?
I, I would imagine that we would start over at the beginning. And, and, and Justin, just to be clear, what are, what are our winter sports? So we have boys' and girls' basketball, we have wrestling, we have winter track.
Yep, skiing, bowling.
Swimming.
Swimming.
So I think on a season-by-season basis, we would need to evaluate the risk associated with each of those respective sports. And, and again, to be clear, the reason I support this is because it's outside. I think indoor and really close proximity, um, is very different.
I think the fact that we are, I mean, that, you know, Dan pointed out that we are giving the opportunity, you know, this is elective, like, parents and students are making this choice to either put themselves in this risk or not put themselves in our risk. Really made me think a little bit more deeply about this, and just like we gave parents the opportunity to choose if we wanted, they wanted to do hybrid, homeschool, or, you know, full remote. I want to be cautious, I want to be worried, I want to do what's best for our students, but at the same time, I, I don't want to see sports, you know, not happen for these kids. It's, it's very impactful and means a lot to these kiddos and to these parents, so, um, I am thinking about, you know, I feel like I, I've been swayed a bit here in the, in the more positive light.
All right, thank you, Janelle. So I'm going to close discussion and take a roll call. All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Dan?
Dan votes yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Tim?
No.
Susanna?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Jared?
With, with regret, no.
Okay. Ginny?
Yes.
Rhonda?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. So that's seven yeses and two noes. So it does pass that we start athletics. And Justin, you'll keep us up to date on how things are going, at least let Brian know.
Of course.
All right, thank you. So with that, we need to talk about policies. Now Jared made a valid point that we gave you permission, so Scott, are you good with using that same, um, authorization, and we don't need to have these motions for the waivers and transportation?
That's the superintendent's discretion. Um, he's, he's nodding his head that he is okay with it. Um, it is more of a protection for him than it is for anyone else, uh, because, again, if it was a board policy, uh, that was waived by the entire board, it just, it insulates your superintendent more for any, uh, adverse actions should they happen.
Inquiry, Heather?
Yes, go ahead, Dan.
So would Jared make his normal motion because that permission to the superintendent ended at this meeting? Am, am I correct in that?
Uh, Denise, uh, let me just call it Denise doing an excellent job. She has amended the agenda with the verbiage that I would use. So it would be consistent, in my opinion, Dan.
So we have an agenda item that we will come to later in the meeting, so that we can do this?
Correct. It is later that we give Brian authorization. Correct. It is later that we give Brian authorization.
Thank you.
So Brian, you're good with us not making these motions? Because I have them written out if you want to.
I'm comfortable.
Okay. All right, so thank you, Justin. Thank you, Mike. Uh, presentations were great. And you guys can go if you want. You don't have to stay. Uh, we're gonna move on to remote learning at the middle school and the high school. Um, not sure who wants to go first?
I'll just kick it off very quickly. So we wanted to provide a brief overview of our remote learning plans for both Mountain View and for Goffstown High School. So um, we do have presentations planned, just being cognizant of the fact that it's almost nine o'clock. Uh, we still have a lot on the agenda. The board still has a number of items in non-public. So we have Mr. Lewis and Mr. Hamel here, and uh, Mrs. Kohler is with them as well. They will be giving a presentation for Mountain View, and Mr. Farley will be doing the presentation for Goffstown High School. So why don't we start with uh, Mr. Lewis? And uh, I might just ask you guys if you can maybe just try to give this a little briefer um, and just make sure that uh, you're covering the content that you need to, but boards, uh, board members can certainly ask questions if you have them, but just being mindful of the time, please.
Of course, absolutely. Lyle, why don't you kick it off?
Certainly. Um, thank you for uh, listening to our plan for remote learning and teaching developed within the reopening core team structure, in particular by the Subcommittee on Teaching and Learning, fallen within the superintendent's reopening frameworks. This information is also posted as of today on the Mountain View Middle School homepage uh, for parents to view. For fully remote students who are in our earlier grades, fifth and sixth, Monday through Friday, they would be receiving each day thirty minute live, uh, which means synchronous video conferencing sessions with a certified in a dedicated fully remote teacher who would teach all of those core subjects. Um, we have the grade five and six teachers uh, listed as well as their email addresses. Um, we just have the um, uh, statement that we would ask parents to withhold from emailing them directly now at this point because they will be um, releasing more information as it pertains to how they will be um, conducting and scheduling um, their sessions. These remote um, classes in fifth and sixth grade will still follow the same content objectives as their hybrid counterparts who will be with us partly in the building. There will be time during the day between scheduled instructional sessions for independent practice and work completion, as well as breaks from technology and activities. So our fully remote kids in fifth and sixth grade would not be on the computer zooming live full-time with teachers. There would be a break for independent work as well as other breaks as needed. And then the teachers who are listed will be giving out more information about the daily schedule on the first day of school um, with their students. In seventh and eighth grade, um, it will look slightly different um, Monday through Thursday. Teachers will be offering pre-recorded lessons by classroom teachers as well as um, posting stock videos from our core content areas such as Pearson Science and Wonders ELA. And also now with the board's approval of the superintendent's um, request to allow for um, various forms of live streaming recording, um, that will add to the repertoire that the teachers can use to deliver content, whether it's through live or recorded sessions um, in the building. This video content will be available in an asynchronous um, model within their Google classrooms. And the activities associated with the content will also be available in the Google classrooms. And just like their counterparts in fifth and sixth grade, they will be also receiving the same objectives as um, their in-person peers. One feature of the seventh and eighth grade model is the virtual remote help desk. During this time, that there will be a daily thirty minute uh, drop-in period um, multiple times a day where students will be able to ask questions about assignments, um, activities and content. The core content area teachers in math, science, social studies and ELA will have um, scheduled times available for drop-in services, um, the times of which, um, as I mentioned, are posted today on the Mountain View Middle School webpage. In addition to certified content area teachers, we will also have paras with paraprofessionals with strong content knowledge who will be available throughout the day in order to help students with questions. And as before, information and links will be forthcoming from team teachers about the subjects available in order to help meet the needs of all of our families. As always, teachers will be available by email and will continue to respond in a timely manner. And this seventh and eighth, Monday through Thursday schedule um, that we've worked to develop mirrors that of many online programs that are available. For all of our students, um, on Fridays, the seventh and eighth um, looks a little bit different compared to the Monday and Thursday. They will be offered the opportunity to have those thirty minute live synchronous sessions with all of their core content area teachers. Um, as well as with their unified arts um, teachers as well. The unified arts teachers will provide assignments and activities via Google Classroom for all students. And students will be responsible for completing one or two activities per week corresponding to the rotation schedule of the unified arts programs within the grades. As of this morning, these are our current number of students who's families have elected them to engage in the fully remote learning model. In fifth grade, we have thirty-two students, sixth grade twenty-two, seventh grade fifty-three, twenty of whom are from New Boston. Eighth grade, total of fifty-five, twenty-two of whom are from New Boston. And with those numbers, um, I would like to hand this off to Mr. Lewis, um, who can speak about um, where the numbers stand.
Thank you, Lyle. Um, so again, priority return, we're looking at coming back in October at this point in time at the earliest. At that point, we're looking at adding one or two more days to a student's schedule. Uh, so if they're coming in on a Monday, Wednesday cohort, then we're gonna try to add either a Tuesday and/or a Thursday if possible. And likewise, on a Tuesday, Thursday, we would try to add a Monday and/or a Wednesday if possible as well. At this point, those requests by grade are thirty-eight for fifth grade, forty-eight for sixth, forty-two for seventh grade, and twelve are from New Boston, and those last thirty-six are in eighth grade and three of which are from New Boston. So our special education, um, students will be able to still receive all related services at this point in time. Um, paraprofessionals are also going to be able to have scheduled times for video conferencing to meet the needs of students and IEPs as well. Um, guidance counselors will still be available to schedule individual video conferencing sessions with students. And of course, our guidance counselors will still be uh, providing second step lessons to all of our students, which is our anti-bullying and social emotional learning. Uh, at this point, for homeschoolers, um, we haven't had any new ones in addition in the last couple of weeks, but these, uh, there are two from seventh grade and two from eighth grade. And then one of each of those individuals are from New Boston. New registrations, uh, there are currently thirty new registrations at MBMS, uh, that will be entered by the end of the week, and I think Debbie did in fact finish entering those in. Uh, we are anticipating a five more packets to be completed and returned to us by September first, so we should have an additional five uh, more students as well. Our current numbers for phase two hybrid, these were accurate as of this morning. Um, those are relatively accurate now, though there have been some shuffling here and there and some changes, but for the most part, they're accurate. So for our cohort A in fifth grade, we have sixty-one kids, cohort B is sixty-seven. When you look at sixth grade, we have cohort A at seventy-nine kids and cohort B at seventy-six kids. Seventh grade cohort A at one fifteen, cohort B is one-ten, and in eighth grade cohort A is a hundred and one and cohort B is seventy-nine. And again, please remember this is excluding any and all new registrations that we have at this time.
Okay, is, so is that it?
That is, that is it. Any questions? I, we, we.
Thank you, you did. Uh, anybody have any questions? Okay, Susanna, go ahead.
So I have a question regarding the start. Those students who are in the cohort B, Tuesdays and Thursdays, do they start uh, school on Thursday and they have Wednesday, you know, the September ninth online? Or nothing is happening for them on September ninth?
There will be welcome videos and things like that that teachers and teams are producing, so those students will still have access to those on Google, on their Google classrooms.
Okay, so every student starts on September ninth, right? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Susanna. Jared, you had something?
This might be a question for Mr. Gross, and and I briefly looked through my minutes, I couldn't find it. We might have already talked about it. But financially speaking, for New Boston being a sending district, the Goffstown being a receiving, receiving district, if we do have students that are one-hundred percent remote, are those still students on the books as uh, students being sent from New Boston, fiscally speaking?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jared. Anybody else have any questions regarding the middle school remote before we move on to the high school? Okay, see and none, then we can move on to the high school presentation?
We can. So Mr. Farley, uh, we'll queue him up, and I would ask uh, Mr. Lewis, Mr. Hamel, um, and Mrs. Kohler, we would bid you a pleasant evening.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for having me. Um, I I think that you'll probably see some, some great similarities between what the seventh and eighth grade model is and what the high school model is in um, regarding remote learning. Uh, so let let me give you just a description of of the platform and what it looks like in big picture. Most of our teachers through the spring became quite proficient at using Google Classroom to supply kids with content and with instructional materials, um, some stock videos, some um, teacher-made videos, as well as print um, or, you know, digital uh, assignments as well. So we're gonna continue using that. Um, we're looking at an asynchronous model at this point, so uh, we have not scheduled students specific times of day that they have to do the the specific assignments on the Google Classroom. But we are right now in the process of scheduling two Zoom meetings per week mandatory with the remote students. So they're not just um, fending for themselves out there doing online assignments. Um, there will be uh, times that are scheduled when they are with teachers doing things similar to what we're doing right now. Uh, we have a hundred and sixty-one students that have chosen fully remote. That's fifteen percent of our population. Um, and it's, it's a little bit lopsided with our sophomores. There's, uh, as you can see in the graph there, it's uh, I I can't predict or or tell you why, but it looks like sophomores are more represented. We didn't have any new homeschool students, new because of remote learning or because of the hybrid model, but we did have seven students uh, choose to go a hundred percent V-Lax. And you'll see again that the sophomores are a bit overrepresented, but seven students have left for a hundred percent V-Lax.
Acronym meaning?
Uh, the Virtual Learning Academy. It's a, it is a uh, online academy that is open for all New Hampshire students.
Thank you. Charter school.
Say it again?
Charter school.
Okay. Now, I just want to give you a kind of an idea of the the scope and the size of of this uh, online academy that we're putting together here. Uh, the percentages, this is, these are our core subjects. The percentages represent the number of courses in our program of study. So for example, in English, we're offering seventy-six percent of the courses that are on our books total for any kid. And you'll see eighty for math, seventy-eight for science, sixty for social studies, and fifty-six for world language. So basically, with our core program and our program of study, seventy percent of those courses that are offered, um, we're now offering them virtually for our students who choose um, one-hundred percent remote learning. And those are all based on student requests. Um, the elective courses are are slightly different. Um, not all elective courses um, uh, tend to work well uh, in a, in a virtual setting. So for example, uh, our welding class is is not particularly uh, suited for online learning, nor is our wood shop. So we were a little bit more particular in how we chose those courses to be offered online virtually. And you'll see there right across the board from the tech ed department, the art department, uh, the family and consumer science department, the business department. Um, so there are a a wide variety of courses, other elective courses that we're offering, and only the ones that are best suited for the platform. Now our teachers, we were able to have four and a half teachers. We had a halftime English position, but basically five teachers, four and a half uh, positions that are a hundred percent remote teaching. Uh, their assignment would be five separate different remote classes of kids, and so they will not be in the building at all. And other than that, we have a number of teachers, twenty-five total teachers who have part of their assignment as remote, one or more classes. Uh, and these teachers will work in the building in the hybrid model and have one or two sections of remote. And you can see there across the board as well, in the core subjects, art, business, tech, health, PE. Um, like the middle school, we're providing support for both teachers and for special education students and remote. Uh, currently, we have a, a, a technology support team that that really came together strong in in the spring and has offered a real wide variety of uh, uh, workshops and PD and and uh, meetings on how to use some of the, the add-ons and the plugins that go along with the Google platform. So our our teachers really came up to speed quickly, and that committee is still going strong, and they've been doing um, professional development work as well um, as as we came back to school on the, on the twenty-seventh. So they're still up and running. Um, we're providing professional development now. We will in December, all on just best uses of the platform. The other thing we were able to do in our schedule is give departments uh, collaborative planning time. So uh, every department was able to have a a specific slot during the day when they're off to work together, and that's been very helpful. Uh, we've already had a lot of collaboration going on just in the past couple of days, even though kids aren't there. And uh, I I think this is, you're gonna hear the same thing that you heard from the the middle school folks is we're, we will be able to provide all the the services on all students, special education students, IEPs. Uh, the case managers will work remotely with these students. The paraprofessionals will work remotely with these students. Um, we are arranging for specialized services, OT, PT, to work either in the building if families choose to, or to be working remotely as well. And I'm hoping for questions.
Great, thank you. Anybody have any questions? Wow. Okay, Jared, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, I'd say we can't let it go with no questions, so I'll just.
I know, exactly.
For the high school level, how are we doing tests between the different sections? So are we giving a test on Wednesday then Thursday? Or are the generalized tests gonna be on Friday uh, from our current academic calendars?
Right, well, Friday i- is, for the hybrid model on Friday, it's a synchronous Zoom day. So kids will be every half an hour with one of their eight teachers, one of their, one teacher from each of their eight periods. Um, uh, so testing would not be on the Friday. We're taking the stance that it's, again, with our hybrid model, that for the the one time per week that a teacher sees a student, it's probably not best served by giving the student a test. Um, we really felt like kids need to be among people, talking with people, working together with their teachers rather than taking a test alone when they come to school. It just didn't seem fair with it. You come to school and three of your four periods, you're sitting in front of a test. So we're looking at trying to schedule these tests on remote days. We've got um, Turnitin software, which is a plagiarism detection uh, uh, application. That's one way that we're looking at at trying to keep the, to keep the tests fair and honest, you know? Uh, we're looking at ways to design our tests so that kids really have to do their own work. Uh, I know that the the AP test this year was remote, and the College Board was able to design college board tests that kids took in their homes remotely. So it can be done. They're just gonna have to look a little bit different than they have. So it can be done. They're just going to have to look a little bit different than they have been.
So if I may follow up, so are these tests going to be asynchronous? So are they going to be, you have to take the test from one PM to two PM when you're, you're remote on those days? I just want to make sure that we have the, you know, integrity, that ability to not have to, you know, have those plagiarism items, especially if it's a multiple choice test that's given. And I would hate to have our teachers have to develop a second test for the next day for student testing as well. I'm just looking to be concerned on our, our faculty and staff. So I don't know if you might be able to articulate that a little bit.
Yeah, you know, I, I'm, I'll do the best that I can. At this point, with the, the remote students, that, that has not been, it, it has not been really clarified. I do know that they did offer assessments all through the spring. We've come a long way. We've learned fairly quickly that the typical, as you said, multiple choice kind of assessment really is not the best format to be used with an asynchronous or, or an independent type of learning situation. So as I said, it's really more changing the, the nature of the assessment, the style of the assessment. There's a lot more where kids need to articulate their reasoning, for example. And again, with the Turn It In, they can't just copy their neighbors, you know, reasoning and, and turn it in as well. So it's, it's really, we're, we're not, we have not articulated very specific guidelines of when and due dates and those kind of things for tests. We have not, but we're looking at, at just changing up the way that they look.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is that all, Jared? You're good? Does anybody else have any questions? I probably should have mentioned this before the middle school left, but I know both of you are still working on schedules for remote learning and you will get them to our families as soon as you can. I know people are chomping at the bit because school starts next week, but I know you guys and the middle school is really working very hard to finalize and you will let everybody know as soon as you can.
Yes, we will. And that, that last piece of the schedule that we're looking for is to, to have regularly scheduled Zoom meetings by subject area so they don't conflict. So for example, we'll have a, you know, a, a student might have either a Monday AM or a Wednesday PM opportunity to Zoom with the English class. And in a Tuesday AM or however, so we just don't want conflicts and we want every kid to have two opportunities to meet via Zoom face-to-face with their teacher. And that's, that's the end goal and that's coming soon.
Right. Well, thank you. I appreciate that. Is there any other questions? So before we close everything down, we probably should have kept middle school on. I just want to, there's been some chatter about the mask policy. And before we move on, I, a letter went out on Friday, which caused a lot of confusion with our schools. So could we just clarify what is expected of students with their masks in school? I understand they have to wear it on the bus. They have to wear it entering and exiting the building, walking around. But if they're in a classroom with Plexiglas and they're six feet apart, and I know a lot of it is at the teacher's discretion, where there's some confusion with recess, there's confusion with when they're in the classrooms, if they can wear a mask, if they can't. I just want to make sure everybody's on the same page because that letter went out on Friday and really upset a lot of people.
Well, I, I'm, I'm not entirely sure who's upset or why. I have not had any parents reach out to me with questions about masks in several months. I had heard early on from parents that told me if we required masks, they would not send their kids back to school. I would like to share with you, if you haven't seen WMUR, there were two positive cases of students in the Bedford School District that were announced today. They did not require any students to isolate or to quarantine or their teachers to do so because the students had masks on and they were appropriately socially distanced. So I do want to be clear, we have a mask policy that we have written. Mr. Gross, I don't know if you have access to that or if Mrs. Barry could email it to you very quickly and we could put it up on the screen. But just to be clear, anytime students are getting onto a school bus, riding a school bus, getting off a school bus, walking into a school, movement within the school, to the bathroom, to the, to the classroom, movement within the classroom, we are expecting students to be wearing masks. When students are seated and they are appropriately socially distanced, with the supervising adults' consent, they are able to take their masks off. So as I sit across from Mr. Talbot, who is twenty-five or so feet away from me, we are appropriately socially distanced and I have my mask off. We are requiring the teacher permission piece because students don't know what's coming next in the lesson. So it could be that the teacher's about to say, okay, guys, we're going to get up, we're going to move, we're going to go in small groups, we're going to do a quick stretch break, whatever it may be. Because students don't know what's coming next, those decisions are at the discretion of the teachers. So I do want to be clear about that. I, I'm, I'm not entirely sure. I think the letter we're talking about is a letter that was sent out from Goffstown High School. But we do have a written mask protocol. I would use policy with a small P, not a school board policy. Scott, I'm not sure if you have that available, if we can put that up.
I don't have it. If someone could send it to me, I'll, I'll be glad to put it up.
Okay, I think MC.
You need me to grab it?
I just, I think I just got it off to you, Scott.
So why don't we, why don't we put that up and we can take a look at that, Scott, if you have that? So the other, the other piece, as, as Scott's pulling that up, there is no question that masks are effective in slowing the transmission of COVID. So Scott, can you make that a little bigger, please? MC, you had the lion's share of developing this and compiling this. Do you want to give us a, a brief walkthrough? Please?
Sure. So hang on just a second here. I think if you look at the top of this, you'll see that there's a purpose statement there relative to the wearing of cloth masks at all times following the established traffic flow pattern. So these are some of the safety protocols as well. And then specific to mask requirements and face coverings. So this is where we talked about if there is a legitimate medical reason to follow physical accommodations that need to be followed. We talked about face shields and gaiters, which are those neck coverings that can be pulled onto the face. You know, are not allowed. A face shield by itself isn't sufficient. A face shield has to be worn along with a face mask as well. And by the way, just so you know, administration has reviewed this as well. So we talked about SAU nineteen students for school bus, for the boarding, riding the entire time, exiting and walking into the classroom. Also, when parents and guardians are dropping students off onto the school grounds, that when kids exit the vehicle and they walk into the classroom, that they have their mask on. That students in preschool, kindergarten and grade one will be provided with developmentally appropriate encouragement and instruction if needed and, and some hands-on support that may be necessary for some of these kids to be able to work with their masks while they're in school. Parents and guardians may be contacted to provide additional support. So if a little one is struggling and we need parents to say, you know, okay, let's practice at home, parents may be contacted. And if a student's choice or behavior results in the need for more formal measures, then administration will address that as well. Students in grade two through twelve will also be provided with developmentally appropriate encouragement. This is really all about teaching and coaching and being kind and caring while also following the safety guidelines. They will be held to the more formally accountable school in the handbooks. We are looking to draft some language that we will be reviewing. Face coverings and masks will need to be removed for nutrition and hydration breaks. Students are to maintain a social distance of six feet or more. Outdoor activities may provide a natural time for face coverings or mask breaks when six feet of social distancing can be consistently maintained. We were out in the playgrounds today talking with some of the teachers and I think if they bring out a classroom full of students and kids are pretty, they're pretty aware at this point. I think there's going to be opportunities. Brian, would you agree with that based on what we saw today?
I, I, I wasn't speaking yet.
Sorry.
I would agree with that. I do want to go back to the question of gaiters. That was something that Jared had asked me. I was just reviewing the CDC guidance. I am not seeing anything specific on the, on the using of, the use of gaiters as I'm looking at the CDC guidance. So that may be something that I'm willing to, to go back and take another look at. Depending upon what they're made of, but there is no, I, I'm not seeing it really quickly here. We'll take another look at that, but that was something that I was asked about, is the wearing of gaiters.
And one of the, I can tell you where that came from. That came from some information out of Massachusetts. So that's where the gaiter question came from. So certainly we can, we can look at the CDC guidelines and revisit that. When students are physically distanced for six feet, six feet or more, at the discretion of a supervisory faculty member, a mask break may be provided. We thought it was important that the mask break may be both initiated by a faculty member and or in response to a student's request because we want to empower our kids that I don't know how many of you have had a mask on for many hours at a time, but I've myself have experienced that there are just times when I'm like, wow, I just got to get this thing off my face. So we wanted to give kids the opportunity to self-advocate and go to an adult. So our staff will be talking to kids. If, if you feel like you, you know, you need some help with this and you need a break, you need to let us know.
All right, thank you. I just wanted to make sure everybody was on the same page. So I appreciate that. So if there's no more questions for the high school, we can move on to the next presentation. And Mr. Farley, I think you can go. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Kevin.
And the next presentation is Mr. Lauren, our facilities director. He's going to give us some quick updates on some summer projects. Mr. Lauren?
Yes, thank you. Is, just to give an update on the gym floor, we'll start there. That project started on the twenty-seventh of this month where they actually went in and tore up a section of the gym floor. As you walk into the gym from the lobby, coming down the hall from the, the main office, right underneath the basketball hoop, there was, you could, there was significant buckling of the floor that was caused from some water damage. They had pulled that up over the last few days and had reinstalled new flooring in that section. They have done a very nice job actually weaving that floor in to have as few seams or noticeable seams as possible. They have sanded that floor down to the, to the wood again to while the gym and they have put a seal coat on that floor. We have asked Justin, which he has done, has sent out the new logo information that, that will be put on to the center court instead of the grizzly that was there before. It will be the new logo that we see that we have out right currently. Right now, once that floor is, after it's completed, they'll have to sit for three to four weeks with no use on the floor to give the floor time to cure of new paint and the finish that is, that will be on the floor. So we're looking at towards the end of September before the, the gym will actually be able to be used. From the the high school gym floor, the Glen Lake modular project. This week, I'll start with the site work at Glen Lake. The site work there is the, the folks from Neville Construction is on site this week finishing the landscaping and seeding in the, the final grade of the, of the, of the site work that's there. And do on the third, which is a Thursday, they're going to be doing the final paving to bring that up to grade. So the site work will be completed this week. The modulators, when they were installed, that after they were set in place, it was a very noticeable that a lot, some of the walls in the, in the unit were not square with one another. So we put some calls out to the, the, the Ski Avi folks to let them know that we're not happy with the way that the modulators were set in place or leveled to what they thought was going to be acceptable. To a point where they have called the manufacturer that had built the modulators that will be on site tomorrow to rack for the modular walls to bring them square with one unit to the other. We have asked that engineering folks that we work with, with Stan Tech, that they will meet us, or meet them as well tomorrow afternoon when they are going to start this work. Just to review with our engineer, just for a piece of mind, the processes that they're going to use to bring these modulators back into alignment with one another. Right now, the floor has, and all of the units have a really noticeable crown to them, which they said is part of the manufacturing process that they put a crown in them so that when they're set in place, that they will level themselves out. That has not happened with these units. So they're, again, the folks that are coming up from the manufacturer will address that to set the floors so that way they, they sit flat and it will, and the walls are square. And once we're satisfied with the work that they're doing with that, that they'll rebuild the, the soffits on the outside of the building to straighten those out because it's real noticeable when you look down the side how out of square that the units are. So that will be straightened out as well. Like I said, that work will start tomorrow. It will take three to four days is what I'm being told by them to do this work. And once that's completed and they have moved on with that, then, and we're happy with what, with the results of what they've done, then we'll start to continuing the work that, that we need to do, which is setting in the ceiling grid, ceiling tile. Because I have stopped that work until this is done, obviously, because if the walls are moving, we can't set the ceiling grid, finish the sprinkler systems and set in the fire alarms and, and that type of the scope of the work can't be done until that is completed. So once that's done, all that, these folks are ready to go. And on a couple of the units, the two that are furthest away from the building are, they were checked and they are square, so they can actually, they're actually starting to set the, the grid work in at least those two sections of the building to, to, to keep things moving on as best that we can. And again, like I said, when that's done and we've checked the floors and we're happy with that and the soffits are built, then we'll still go in, we'll finish the floors and load the modular to, to get it ready to turn over to, to Kathy's group to utilize that building the way that they, that they would like. The connector building, that, that, that piece of the project was going, is going very well. And actually, we, I actually had slowed them down until we get the, the main part of the modular straightened away to let them, to turn them loose again. But it is the, the structure of the building is built, the, the roof is on. The only set, the only piece that has not been done is the, is the marrying between that connector building and the modular unit. It did make sense, obviously, to wait and, except there's any movement in that building, that it does not interfere or, or move that connector building in any way. So that will be, that will take place and we'll tie that in by the end of this week as well. We're looking to put on a door that goes to the backside of the building. It was very noticeable during this as we were trying to move around the building or for, you know, to, to gain access, to look at things, to see that, you know, it was it would make sense to put a door that you could go and walk out to the back of the building instead of having to walk all the way around the building to get to the back of the building. So they, we will, that will be installed this Thursday as well. The projects that we, that we've been working on this summer at the, at the middle school, in the fax room, there was a a through door that we had to put in for another means of fire egress that was required of us by the, the fire department. So that project has been completed and that, that door is in. They did a very nice job installing that door. The stairs at the high school, those stairs are in. They were working on the railings today to set those railings. So the, the railings will be set this week and that, that project will be completed by Friday.
Dan has a question.
Yes, go ahead, Dan.
If we back up to the gym floor again.
Yes.
The, I vote in Bartlett, not at the high school, but I, in my day job, I visit polling locations. Have we not used the gym for the September eighth primary? Or is it the front gym or what part? Because you mentioned we can't get on that gym floor now until the end of September and September eighth is the primary. Until the end of September and September 8th is the primary. So where are they?
And this, Dan, this is Scott, um, for the September primary, um, Kathy Ball, who's our town clerk at Goffstown High School will only use the, um, the senior cafe and the rear, uh, the rear, I guess it's the cafeteria there. So they do not use the high school gym for the September primary.
That was the inquiry. Thank you.
For the general election, they will.
Cool. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Does anybody have, oop, Jared, go ahead.
Let me get off mute. Thank you, Ms. Chair. Um, the question that I have is for Glen Lake. With the delays that we have with Glen Lake, I know that we're going to be transitioning to phase two. Uh, in the October timeframe. Do we, uh, feel or, or do we believe that that may, um, that may cause an issue with the delays that we have in the structure? Um, if we have to rebuild, re-rack, re- remove and then load all the furniture in there. Will it be ready for October for that phase two transition? And if not, what is our alternative plan?
Randy, any, so, so we, we've experienced a little bit of a delay because we had some of the issues with the, the walls being plumb. I would be remiss if I didn't thank Randy for all of his diligence, his, um, tireless efforts to make sure that things are being done right. They're being done, um, to standard. So it, it probably would have been easy to say, eh, it's close enough, but, um, that's not Randy Loring. Uh, Randy wouldn't have that. So Randy, when do you think, we had hoped that we would have that building ready for Mrs. Stoyl for the first day of school? That's not going to be the case, but when, when, when do you think we'll be, we'll be ready to, uh, start moving furniture in there, Randy?
I'm anticipating probably the third or the beginning of the fourth week of September, we'll be loading furniture into that building. Hopefully before that, but that's what I'm anticipating. By the end of September, we'll be starting to push furniture into that and setting it up for, for Kathy's use for the, uh, for the start of October.
So Kathy, how would that look in terms of moving into phase two for Glen Lake? If, uh, if Randy's handing you the keys to that somewhere around the, you know, the, the end of September?
I would say that as long as we have that portable, that we're looking good with our numbers in order to be able to move into phase two. We, um, it would definitely be a challenge in phase one. But, uh, we've got some creative workarounds right now, uh, to get us off and, um, off and running. And then, um, with Randy's timeline, then, um, it looks promising that we could move into phase one, um, in October. So, and I think, you know, if we got, I think October 1st is in the middle of the week. It might mean that we, you know, start that following Monday, but we're on track.
And if I could just clarify, uh, Glen Lake is opening in phase one, which is our more restrictive phase. It's the only school that is opening in that level. And she would be looking to move to phase two, which would be approximately a 50% capacity. And the reason for that, as we stated during our reopening presentation, has to do with, um, having three, four and five-year-old children and just the need to really, um, teach good expectations, to create that culture and to make sure that we have, um, sufficient spacing around all of our kids.
The other thing that I would just want to, um, add is that if we were one key thing that we need to establish between phase one and phase two is that quick turnaround, um, disinfecting of the building. So we're going to have an hour to, to get that done and be ready for the next group. And that will involve the whole building. So, um, having that, that portable accessible for a few days. So we can kind of practice and make sure that we can cover that extra territory as well. And get everything cleaned within the, within the timeframe that we need to, and that we have the right staffing and materials for that will be, um, important.
Thank you, Mrs. Stoyl. Jared, you had something else to say?
Yeah, a statement, and then I'll follow up with a, a final question. Um, thank you for the work that both Randy and, and, um, Scott has done on this initiative. I know that, um, they've worked very diligently with, um, setting up the modules and the conversations that have occurred. I did, uh, have the opportunity to do a walkthrough at the Glen Lake module and I clearly second and see what Randy has articulated with some of the deficiencies, um, with, with the setup. So I'm glad that we're getting those fixed. My, my specific question, and Brian, I'm going to probably ask this of you, is it is being stated as a requirement that we're going to have that portable up in order to move to phase two in Glen Lake? If we do not have the portable ready, we will not be moving to phase two.
I'm not ready to commit to that, but, um, I would need to speak with Mrs. Stoyl. So we had planned. So our, our timeline had been that we thought we were going to have access to that building in the first week of September. So we are delayed. Um, I, I wouldn't want to commit to that, Jared, but certainly we need the space. Mrs. Stoyl, do you want to speak to that? I, I would say I, I would probably want to, um, get into that a little more.
Yeah, I think that, um, I think we'll know a little more as we move forward. Um, uh, you know, the challenges with, um, bringing children in and in more, we might, we might be able to make that midday work and in the, um, in the numbers that we have, if we can get the cleaning down. I think it's going to be something that we're going to have to kind of explore and just see, um, that, you know, as we're moving under. We're, right now we've been working, Randy's been working really hard with us to make sure that we have enough room to, we had ordered some furniture. We have another preschool class, um, that's, uh, starting this year and, um, we were, we've got furniture that we were trying to move into places that was being stored in the hallways. And now we're trying to clear it out and have places to put it while we wait to move into the portable. So, um, it's been a bit of Tetris, uh, at Glen Lake, but, but we're continuing. So, uh, so we're solving, we're solving things as they come up. So I wouldn't, I agree with Brian. I wouldn't say that it's an impossibility. It would certainly, you know, present challenges, but it's, I won't say it's impossible.
Thank you, Mrs. Stoyl. Does anybody have any other questions for either Mrs. Stoyl or Mr. Loring on any of the projects? All right. I am seeing none. Thank you both. Um, Brian, they can say good night.
Please.
Thank you so much, both of you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. We're going to move on to our reports. Scott, standing committee reports, manifest vouchers.
Thank you. Um, we have three, uh, essential, three manifests before you this evening. They were all, uh, pre-approved by myself due to your authorization, uh, earlier in the year. Uh, the first one is for the month, is for that last batch in the month of June. Um, and that's for $1,506,006.07. Uh, just a couple of highlights. You're going to see typical things that you do in terms of special education activity and payroll. On your general expenses, just a couple of noteworthy ones. Manchester School District is your MST tuition and, um, we started to pay out on the Glen Lake project in that, in that time period. Um, we mentioned earlier about the purchase of Chromebooks that was on there. So essentially, um, just a lot of activity for that one last week of June. Are there any questions for this particular manifest?
Jared, you have a question?
No question on the manifest itself, but I, I do know that these need to be signed. So we expect to get electronic signatures.
The superintendent has the paper ones, uh, with him?
Yes, Scott, that, that's what I was going to ask. Do you want me to take those, um, around for?
Yes.
For signature?
Yeah, it's, it's a bit easier if that's the case, um, with, if, if you're in person.
You do need a motion to accept these unauthorized.
Before, before we sign them, we have to approve them. So, go ahead, Dan. Let's do the June 30th first. If nobody has questions, go ahead, Dan.
Sure. I move that we approve the total manifest for the June amount of $1,506,006.07.
Thank you, Dan. Do I have a second? And I have a second by Ginny. I'm going to do a roll call if there's no other questions. Dan?
Yes.
Ellen? Tim?
Yes.
Susanna?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Ginny? Rheta?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. So we're unanimous. That motion passed. So go ahead, Scott, to the next one.
The next one is the month of July and the amount of $3,404,548.28. About 1.3 million in payroll. Uh, special education. Again, these are the same vendors that you typically see. Uh, who do out of district placements and consulting workforce, about 153,000. And now you're going to start to see some bigger payments. So, uh, Wells Fargo, uh, your first one is your bond payment. There's only one more bond payment remaining, just so you know, and that'll be in your budget for this particular year. So that's good news. Uh, we, we paid Ski Avi for, uh, which was payment number two, 313,000. Uh, the voters approved a deposit into the capital reserve fund for 200,000. Pinnacle Public Finances are 100 well-phase two payments. Uh, Primex is our property insurance. On Point Concrete was the Glen Lake project at 101,000. And John Neville was also part of the Glen Lake project, uh, was 100,000 and change. Again, we had laptop leases for 70, our adult, uh, alt education building lease at New England Sheep Metal. Just a lot of things get paid in the month of July. Noteworthy here, um, you'll see, uh, some PPE. Uh, these are, it's called Embroid Me. Bedford is the name of the company. These are not embroidered, uh, face masks or anything. It's just a company that, that, uh, sells and distributes the PPE that we purchased. And, um, you'll also note down below here, menu designs. Again, these are sneeze guards that, those are those plastic, um, I'm sorry, those acrylic type, um, you know, barriers that we placed in a lot of the schools. So, combination of a whole lot of expenses, uh, that occurred in the month of July.
Great. Thank you, Scott. Does anybody have any questions for Scott? Okay. If not, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the manifest for July.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the July manifest in the amount of $3,404,548.28.
Thank you, Dan. Jared, you're going to second?
Second.
Okay, Jared, just second. I'll take a roll call. Dan?
Yes.
Ellen? Tim?
Yes.
Susanna?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Rheta?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. So we're unanimous, unanimous and we pass. So go ahead, Scott, for August.
The next one is the month of August, another large one, $4,130,000. 230, $263.30. I apologize, I'm fumbling there. Uh, payroll was 1.1 million. You'll note that health trust was, uh, two months of health and dental, July and August. For a total of about 2.6, 2.7 million dollars there. Not a whole lot of special education, uh, expenses. Uh, then we get to general expenses, a couple of ones. We do have our laptop leases that we have for our staff. Uh, that was, uh, paid in that month. Dell computers, uh, you'll recall that we receive, receive an ESER grant for part of the CARES Act. 276,000. We did spend 120,000 on, uh, laptop computers. Uh, Manchester School District is our second semester, uh, MST bill, along with an adjustment from last year. The next one, $86,000. This was to Palmac for, this was a security grant that we received from the state of New Hampshire. Uh, that's our central access controls. Uh, WEI, that's our server virtualization, 60,000. Impact Fire, uh, we had a lightning strike at Maple Avenue and it impacted the fire panel. That's a, it was covered by insurance. But again, that's part of that particular one. We will be getting reimbursement there. Electricity is next. Embroid Me of New Hampshire. Again, it's another 24,000 in PPE. Gov Connection, grant-funded laptops. And you'll see that a lot of this is technology. And some of it is related to COVID in terms of, um, you know, our purchases of both computers, personal protective equipment. And or custodial cleaning type supplies. And I sent this out to, for those in the audience who are watching, the, the board gets this on, they got, they got on Friday afternoon as well. So there are any questions, I can respond to them.
Thank you, Scott. Go ahead, Dan.
Yes, sir.
The, are we getting CARES money for the PPE? So are we?
No, we're not. But we are getting it through FEMA grant, which is 75% reimbursement. So we cannot, um, you, you can't double dip with your grants. So.
I would think not.
Right. So, um, we, we, I'll probably submit our first round for, of FEMA grants for both New Boston and Goffstown, either late this week, early next week. And it's probably going to be somewhere between 100 and 120,000 dollars worth of PPE cleaning supplies. Things are eligible for FEMA reimbursement at 75%. And then there, there's another round of it coming out. And that I will be putting in for the sneeze guards, the desk shields. FEMA is not, there hasn't been guidance on those. So those are going to be put forth in our second round of applications.
All right. Thank you. Go ahead, Dan.
I will offer a motion that we approve the August manifest in the amount of $4,130,263.30.
Thank you, Dan. Jared, you're going to second?
Second.
All right. There's no other questions. I'll do roll call again. Dan?
Yes.
Ellen? Tim?
Yes.
Susanna?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Ginny? Rheta?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. So, uh, we're unanimous and we pass. Ginny and Ellen, you guys have to unmute when you answer because they can't hear us. All right. Thank you.
I, I, if I may.
Scott, go ahead.
Yeah, if I may, I forgot to put on the agenda a budget transfer that I did, um, a while ago. This was done back in early August. And I think it was right, the timing of your last board meeting. I, I don't think I mentioned it to you, but it's by, although I have the authority and sort of superintendent to do this budget transfer, I wanted to at least let you know about it. This one was for special education where the director of special ed, um, she needed to hire contracted services due to, uh, the fact that there was a teacher issue. So we transferred $50,000 from the, uh, special education district teacher line to the contracted services line so that she could pay for those, um, basically those vendors, uh, in lieu of a teacher. So I wanted to at least let you know that. As for information purposes and Heather, I would, for auditing purposes, I would ask you to sign this at some point.
Okay.
But I just wanted that to be on the record.
Great. Thank you. All right. So moving on to, oh, Dan, did you have a question?
I, I did. And I'm wondering, since it's over the 10,000, why don't we have to approve it?
It was during the summer months where you gave, um, the superintendent and myself the ability to conduct business on your behalf.
Yeah, but didn't we say something about and bring it to the board for final approval or something like that?
I thought it, I, I wasn't sure if it was final approval or if it was acknowledgement.
It's reporting.
Do a motion, I can, we can do that too.
It would make me feel more warm and fuzzy, but.
Go ahead, Dan. Go ahead, Dan. Make your motion.
I would like to make a motion that we approve the, um, the summer transfers, budget transfers. And I'm going to leave it wide open in case it was more than one for $50,000.
Okay.
And it was only one, right?
As far as I know, that was the only one that we did. Um, I, I don't believe any of the schools did budget transfers during the summer, not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Jared, are you second?
I think Ellen did.
Okay, Ellen's seconding. All right. I'll do roll call. Dan?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Susanna?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Ginny? Rheta?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. So you're all set, Scott.
All right. Now, uh, this time of year, as you know, we have to complete, uh, two, no, actually a few forms, but one of them is called the MS25, which is essentially, um, our, um, the financials for this, for the school district in terms of what we spent. And again, it also delineates, uh, what was our unassigned fund balance. This is used for tax rate setting in, in October. Uh, what I wanted to share with you first and foremost is that these are all based upon audited, uh, figures. So Plodzik and Sanderson, um, was able to complete their audit, uh, by the, I was about two weeks ago. And, uh, I would be very remiss, uh, if I did not thank Laura Taylor. Good news is that Laura, uh, had a baby girl, uh, about a week, about 10 days ago. But she, uh, she worked all the way up until the end of the audit, um, and, uh, just, you know, God bless her. And just, you know, God bless her in terms of that, but she did an outstanding job in preparation for it. So Plodzik and Sanderson did the audit, and all of the figures that you see here are based upon, upon that. I complete the DOE twenty-five, which is how these numbers are arrived at. And then Cheryl, from Cheryl Pratt from Plodzik and Sanderson, she reviews, she reviews those figures. And I sent you her letter in which it documented her review. Really noteworthy here that I wanted to share with you is a couple of things. The board, through its action, has six hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars set aside in what's called a two and a half percent contingency fund, and you're well aware of that. You also, the voters approved a two hundred thousand dollars for a transfer into the capital reserve fund. And then the big number, which is one that you typically want to know from year to year, is what was the unassigned fund balance? And that number was one point seven million dollars roughly. It's about three hundred thousand more than last year's. Of that one point seven million dollars, that will be going back to reduced taxes, about eight hundred thousand of that was based upon a unspent dollars in our budget. And the remainder was revenues that were, that were not, you know, predicted or that came in higher than projected. So I wanted to share that with you. So we will see, this will translate come tax rate setting time in terms of a favorable tax rate, a lot lower than what we had originally predicted. You'll recall in our voter's guide that we had anticipated somewhere around fourteen dollars, and it's gonna be far less than that. So I hesitate, I, I'm not in the, the tax rate setting business. A lot will depend upon the assessment, the evaluation, I should, evaluation of the town. But I think this would, this will bode well come tax rate setting, and I'll let you know what that is in, in October. So that is your, as you, I don't know if you've went through this over the weekend, but it all, it all delineates how much money, how much revenue we received, and all of our expenses, et cetera. So that is it for the MS twenty-five. The DOE twenty-five, as I said, that's how you get the numbers for the MS twenty-five. This one's in a lot more detail, because the state requires us to break everything down. So not only do you see balance sheet information, but you also see where the monies were spent in terms of the general fund at the elementary school level, the middle school level, and your high school level. And it's for all different funds. So it's a, it's a ton of time and effort that goes into this. All the numbers kind of have to tie out, but this is what the state uses when they determine what's the cost per pupil. If there's any legislative action that wants to know how much money is being spent on supplies, you name it, they go to, they go to these reports to meet school district essentially. So that being said, I'll stop sharing and entertain any questions on either the DOE twenty-five or the MS twenty-five.
Great, thank you. Does anybody, Ellen, you have a question? Yeah, unmute.
Yes. And I don't know if it goes to these two. Scott was speaking about the cost for PPE and that kind of thing. At some point, not too far down the road, will, could we be receiving a report on what the pandemic has cost the district?
Yeah, Heather asked for that as well.
Okay. And what, and what of, of that total amount, how much we received from various grants and that? So we have an idea of what this has cost us.
I, I've been keeping a running, a running track of it, and, and one of the challenges, Ellen, is some of the numbers are not known. So one good example, as you well know, is in the area of special education, is we're doing IEP meetings. And there's, there's costs for, say, compensatory services, there's costs for additional custodial help, which we're not sure what that's gonna look like, you know, so we have, we, we've kind of allocated funds for that. But I'll, I'll be in a position next school board meeting to explain that to you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ellen. Does anybody else have any questions for Scott before we move on? All right, I don't see any.
Can I just do one real quick?
Yeah, go ahead, Brian.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Scott for his efforts to get the DOE twenty-five and the MS twenty-five done on time. Given everything that's been going on, we had originally put in for an extension, but Mr. Gross plowed through it, got it all done, used audited figures. So I just wanted to recognize Scott's efforts on this. Certainly Laura is a, a big asset here as well, but thank you, Scott, for your efforts to get these incredibly important reports done, accurately confirmed by our auditors. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. So before we go on to the superintendent's report, so we all need to sign these forms, right? The, yeah, okay. Ellen, just going to give us a quick two-minute update on CIP. We had planned to do it at the next board meeting, but she has to do a presentation before then, so she just wants to give us an update.
Yes, just real quick, and I'm asking to do it tonight because I'm meeting, meeting with the planning board next week, which is before our next meeting. CIP is, I represented the school board, CIP this summer. Very illuminating again, always informative. Our CIP and result through that committee process, we have been able to maintain the lower totals for the first two years of the six-year plan. We kept them down, the committee understood that we wanted to keep them lower these two years, given the world circumstances. A couple of items were moved around a little bit to help balance out the years. We did move up a couple of items to help in that balancing, but this is a planning tool. The CIP did recommend it, and I voted in favor of it. I have gone over all of this with Scott in detail. He didn't see any problems with any of the ideas about moving stuff around a little bit. So that, I just want to let you all know that that's going before the planning board next week.
Okay, and at September fourteenth, you'll have a more.
I can do more details, yes.
More detail, let us know what was moved and stuff.
Yep.
Does that sound good for everybody? All right, thank you, Ellen. Hey, Brian. Oh, yes, Dan, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Can we get a copy of the updated spreadsheet before the next meeting, please?
Yes, can we do that?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dan.
We'll send it out.
All right, Brian, superintendent report.
Thank you. So just a few things I'd like to make sure that the board is aware of. As we've been working through figuring out our bus times, we have had to make some slight changes in our arrival and dismissal times. Mr. Gross has worked very closely with our principals and Justin Huff, who has also helped with coordinating busing. So we have made some slight changes to make sure that we have staggered arrival and dismissal times, and that we have an increased number of parents driving. So just to make sure that all of those timings align, I did want to let the board know that. We're also in the final stages of making changes to our school handbooks. So Mrs. Barry has been working with the schools, and we're working with the principals to get the language squared away that will include some of the changes around athletics, as well as the athletic handbook. I did want to let the board know, I approved one early enrollment request as a non-resident. This was one that I was comfortable doing. It had a, there was a closing date within the, the very beginning, the first week and a half of September. And rather than have the board deliberate on that in non-public, I approved that. Our opening days have gone very well, so all of our staff has been back. We have had the chance, actually Kate, MC and I have gone around to all the schools. We normally do a big welcome back with everyone together. Obviously, we weren't able to do that. I miss doing that, but it was great to get out to each school, to see all of the staff. And I really feel good that people are gonna be ready. I think we have really good plans in place. And I'm very confident, we've got some good PD that's occurring over the next couple of days as we get closer to September ninth. The, the board may be aware that over the last couple of years, the Goffstown Public Library had spearheaded a program called Crucial Conversations, and took on the very often challenging, complex topic of race. And I was contacted, Chief Serino was contacted, they're looking to continue some of those conversations with us. So we have agreed to continue to participate in that. Scott, I didn't know if you were ready to talk numbers with this, but we just received notification last week that we are going to be experiencing a, an insurance premium holiday from Health Trust. We were notified, the board may recall, and some of you who've been around for a while, there was a period of time where Health Trust had amassed a large sort of fund balance, and they had distributed that back to the paying members. So we are in the very early stages of evaluating this, but it is a sizable number that I think will be very, very helpful. So we're, we're looking at that. Scott, I didn't know if you wanted to add anything to that, or more to come, maybe at the next meeting?
Yeah, I'd say more to come, because I, I still haven't gotten the figures yet. I know you have, I haven't seen anything yet.
Okay, so we'll, I'll put that on, on this for an update for the next meeting. And the last piece that I wanted to share, as we've talked about moving between phases, I do want to remind the board that we have received no guidance from public health around how do we move between phases of either being open, not being open, different phases within a hybrid model. I wish that I could give you a mathematical formula, an algorithm that says, once we satisfy this many points, we are ready to move to the next phase. But I have been working on this for some time. I did want to let you know, the new Boston board asked me to give an update on this at each meeting. I thought that was a good request. Mr. Schmidt had asked that. So I did want to kind of give a, a status update to the Goffstown board. So here are the variables that I'm looking at as we make our recommendations around moving between phases. First, we're looking at community transmission numbers. So we're looking within the US, the US has now passed over six million COVID cases. Certainly very different in New Hampshire. We're looking at New Hampshire, Hillsborough County, Goffstown and New Boston. At this, at this point in time, last I spoke with the fire chiefs, we had zero cases in New Boston, and we had one to four known cases in Goffstown. So that's very positive. I think we're absolutely going in the right direction. And we look at a week-to-week, are we increasing, are we decreasing? So those are some of the pieces that we look at. We look at a testing positivity rating of less than five percent. So when we start to see states that are spiking, they start to see an increase in the positivity rating, and we are looking for a positivity rating of less than five percent. New Hampshire has consistently met that. We were in the two point four to two point eight percent positivity rating for the last couple of weeks. This is one that the board has heard me speak about. I can't emphasize the importance of this variable enough, workforce and staffing capacity. So our ability to make sure that we have enough staff to meet the needs of the students that we have, the number of kids we have on campus, and the number of students and the supports that they need, the workforce capacity. Again, this one's a little intangible, but I can't emphasize enough, this is something that concerns me. I know it concerns Mrs. McGrath as well. Successful implementation of a more restrictive phase. So in order for us to move to a less restrictive phase, we would expect to have a successful implementation of the current phase. And if we don't have a successful implementation of the current phase, then I would expect that we would regress to a more restrictive phase. It's very important for me that we get input from our administration, as well as our collective bargaining units. So both the GEA and the GESS, our Teachers Association, and our Support Staff Association, as well as our New Boston teachers and New Boston support staff, as well as the ability for both boards to be able to weigh in. Goffstown can't move to a new phase without New Boston being in tow. New Boston arguably could do a phase increase at their elementary school, and then they would have to kind of live with the implications. But Goffstown would not have to have a corresponding change in the phases for the students that are tuitioned here. But we would want both boards to have the capacity to have those conversations. And now the next series of variables that I would look at kind of fall in that public health realm. So this would be testing capacity, looking at accurate, timely access to testing. We know that in the beginning of COVID, testing was incredibly problematic. People weren't able to get tested, testing took a long time. And New Hampshire has recently purchased fifteen of these accurate, quick-paced return. I think it's within fifteen minutes testing. So that testing capacity is important. Contact tracing ability, again, I had shared that we will evaluate if we had to help with contact tracing ability. There is a six-hour course available from Johns Hopkins University that we would put some folks through. Healthcare system capacity, looking at the numbers of hospitalizations, the number of people in intensive care units. Hospitalization numbers in New Hampshire are very promising. There are not restrictions or an overcapacity need at our healthcare systems and our, our local hospitals. Travel restrictions imposed by the state, at this point, there are some, but they're primarily outside of New England, or there are restrictions for people coming in from other states. I think Rhode Island is the only New England state that has any restrictions imposed. PPE availability, you'll recall, let's go back to March. You couldn't buy masks, you couldn't buy wipes, you couldn't buy sanitizer, you couldn't buy gowns. We couldn't get the protective equipment that we needed. The supply chain has come around on that. There's a lot of people that are kind of venturing out into new realms around PPE. Guidance from the Department of Health and Human Services, if there are any cases, it is likely that public health would recommend we move to a more restrictive phase, or potentially to remote learning. I am, I'm hopeful, given the two Bedford cases that they've had in the last day, and they have not had to change phases because they implemented strict standards, as we are, around distancing, as well as mask requirements and cleaning and sanitation. Group size restrictions in the beginning, ten or less, then we went up to fifty, now it's greater than fifty, and there are implic, there are new impositions per executive order for groups over a hundred. I think it's Executive Order sixty-four. This is the only mask mandate we have in New Hampshire, that if there's a group over a hundred, by executive order of the governor, they're required to wear masks. And lastly, social distancing expectations and recommendations from public health. We've kind of debated the six-foot spacing versus three to six-foot spacing with masks. So any changing guidance from public health around that. So this is the list of variables that I'm looking at. It's not a formula. I, I can't input, you know, numbers and come back and say, oh, according to the formula, we're ready to move. But at this point, when people have asked me, what are you considering to move between phases, that's my list. So I certainly, I am not a public health official. I would welcome public health chiming in. If there's anything that I'm missing, we're missing, other school districts should be considering. It's, I, I'm, I'm a superintendent of schools, I'm not a public health official, but these are the factors that I continue to evaluate, and I just wanted to make sure I shared that again with the board. You've heard me talk about these variables. I've now continued to refine them, kind of put them in a hierarchy of sequence. And I will continue to update you on these. The new Boston board, as I said, asked me to update them on these variables at each of their meetings. So if it's this board's pleasure, I will kind of continue to do that. But at this point, those are the factors I'm looking at, and that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Brian. Ellen, you had a question for Brian?
Yes. Hear me now? At what point, Brian, would we be first looking at what we need to change, if we need to change anything? Given a fourteen-day incubation period, I would think three, four weeks that we'd be looking at changing phases or.
Well, I, I, I don't know that I'd want to set a specific timeline, but I, I would say that based on those factors, once we decide that we think we're at a point to move phases, it's going to take us some time to change bus routes, to look at the groupings, to look at some of the logistical implications. So I, I think that my recommendation, I, I do feel really good about the numbers in Goffstown and New Boston. I think community transmission, at least based on known cases, does not appear to be as significant a factor as it was a couple of months ago, particularly in the sort of April timeframe. So I think that in terms of having a successful opening, I think that we want to stay in the phase that we're at for the month of September. I would think that as we start to progress, the next step that we will do that doesn't require a change in phase is. that doesn't require a change in phase is, um, increasing the number of priority return students. So that will be kind of the next step that we'll take, that we will have, um, Mrs. Kohler spoke about that a little bit, that we'll start to have some students attending school more days. But I, I would think that we want to have several weeks of successful, um, opening, several weeks of making sure that we have good habits, good routines, good culture established. And then if public guidance is looking favorable and we continue to get good numbers from public health as well as our fire chiefs, then we would be coming forward, uh, with a recommendation. I do want to again say, I want to make sure that we allow our, um, teacher and support staff unions to provide input to me and to voice any- Can't stress enough, if we don't have the workforce, we will not be able to move to, um, less restrictive phases of being open. So I, I would say let's, let's start strong. Let's make sure that we get off to a good start and then let's evaluate, um, as we get closer to October.
Ellen, yes, something else?
One other question with regard to priority return. If a parent put in a request for, uh, their child to be in school more than the two days a week because of lack of childcare, family circumstances, whatever, have they all been notified?
So we, we notified people that once they put in for priority return, they're on the list. So right now we have a list. We haven't reached out to our priority return parents with asking more detail. So, um, Scott, can you echo her? I mean, uh, mute her. Thank you. I just, I, when, when we're both on, I, I, I get this, uh, a lo- a lot of echoing. Thank you, Ellen. So o- once we, um, we will be reaching out to parents in the next couple of weeks. And we will be asking them to give us a little more information about their request for priority return. I want to make sure that priority return truly is priority and that we're making, um, decisions based on, um, some factors. So we've started, uh, I'm, I'm not quite there yet, but we have a short list of things that we're evaluating for in, um, for priority return. And we'll be reaching out to those parents within a couple of weeks, but they're on the list. Anyone who selected on their selection form, priority return is on the list.
You have something else, Alan? Un, unmute. Scott, can you unmute Ellen, please?
It doesn't work on my end. I-
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
It popped up, so I was able to- Those people who put in for it, uh, their child will be starting with the two days a week. If it, um, so then they may have to stop working to take care of their kid. Because we haven't done the priority start yet. Okay.
We've had a few kids that principals have prioritized, but we have not opened up bringing back, um, additional groupings of kids. We're not ready to do that yet. So we, we, I want to be clear, and anyone who put in for priority return, I don't want anyone to think that they're going to all of a sudden be in school four days within the month of September. It's going to take us some time. The other thing that this board needs to understand, we've had a number of people who have selected remote learning, remote only. But we've had dozens and dozens of parents that have told us they intend to only be remote for the month of September. So that is a further complication. Those are slots now that I need to give to students returning from remote learning. And those would be seats that I could give to priority return. But I can't do it if I've got kids coming back in, in October.
All right. Thank you, Brian. Ellen, are you good? All right. And I think I hopefully speak for everybody. We do want updates, um, on how things are going. Oh, wait, hang on one second, Janelle. Jared had his hand up and then I'll call on you, okay?
Oh, I'll say I, I yield to Janelle, but, um, okay. Uh, Brian, you brought up something as part of the superintendent report. And I would like to reemphasize that if this is important to our staff and faculty, which I know it is, it would be beneficial to have those teacher representatives on this board so that they can provide accounts when we have these discussions as a whole. I didn't know, have there been any advances or any openings? Cause we have been without a, a teacher rep for a full year now. And I just wanted to see where we are with that.
So by policy, you have, um, three open seats on the school board for teacher reps. Um, you give me a, a good reminder, Jared, I'll send something out to just remind our faculty that those seats are there. I would make that statement now. It's by level. So we have an elementary seat, a middle school seat and a high school seat. So any, um, teachers that are interested in putting their name in, uh, we, we in the past had several people put in for it and we would do like a little kind of election. But we haven't had a, a single teacher that has, um, expressed interest. But you, your, your prompt is a good one. I will make sure that, uh, we send something out and at least inquire if we, um, have any interested teachers.
And, and I would like to reemphasize to our teachers that it's definitely going to be important as we move forward and have these conversations. I, I have a feeling that this is going to get, uh, to a point where somebody's going to bring up a motion about moving to another phase, whenever that is, I'm not sure. But I think it would be important that we have the, that teacher representative, representation on this board for those discussions. So I do please implore any teachers to assist us in having those conversations so that we can make informed decisions.
Thank you, Jared. Good point. All right, Janelle, you had something you wanted to say?
Good point, Jared. I, I think that's a very important thing that we're, uh, taking a look at. And again, if we can get some sort of incentive out there to, to teachers, maybe have, teachers who have worked with the school board, you know, um, maybe put in some good words and some buzz. I don't know. That'd be great. I just want to follow up on, on Ellen's question about, um, sort of what you were talking about with the fully online kids coming back in October. And I was just curious, when that happens, are we still going to be able to keep our cohort size small and keep our distance in the classroom? Are we looking at that? I assume everybody's looking at that right now.
We are, we are, Janelle, and that, that's one of the most complicated factors that we're struggling with right now. So, um, right, wrong or indifferent, I allowed parents to look at this on a month to month basis. Some school districts took the approach that whatever you chose, if you chose remote learning, you chose it for the entire first half of the school year. That seemed like an incredible, um, decision for families when public health circumstances, um, are changing as quickly and rapidly and, um, unexpectedly as they are. So we have been notified that people do intend to come back. That does restrict, um, our ability to add additional priority return students. It does increase our cohort sizes. But what it does, Janelle, is say, say I have a class of, um, of 20, 24 students. We break them in half into two groups. So now I have two groups of 12. Then I remove all of the remote only students. That then potentially takes me from 12 to say, maybe it's 10 in a particular classroom, or maybe it's 11. That would mean then that I would have the ability to add one or two or a couple of seats. But if I start to get, um, those seats that would be going to priority return students are going back to students who are electing not to be remote, but want to be in a hybrid model, it creates, um, more complication for us. It does increase our cohort sizes. They're still within, uh, what we would expect them to be. But it limits the number of priority return students that we would be able to take in. So, um, I, I've not heard of other districts that are taking this kind of approach. I think it was kind of unique, uh, that we came up with this. But li- logistically, it is a, um, I jokingly call it a four dimensional puzzle because you're, you're building something that, uh, really has, um, more than three axes. So it, it is tricky and complicated. I, I want, to Ellen's point, I heard what you said about a hardship on parents. We know that. We know this is a hardship on families. We talked about that when we did the presentation on reopening. But this is the only way that we would be able to keep our kids, um, appropriately distanced. You've got Bartlett, the first section was built in 1920. Maple Ave, built in the 1950s, New Boston, Boston Central School, first parts were built in the 1950s. These are undersized classrooms. We have a lot of elementary kids. Um, I could potentially look at schools moving to other phases out of sequence. So that could be a recommendation that we have. The high school would probably be the first school, um, positioned to move into phase three. But it is hard for me to justify because I think our high school kids, while I agree that they need to be on campus, um, they do, uh, typically have more independence than our younger students. And at least for your high school students, it doesn't create a childcare, um, struggle. So we, we will continue to evaluate this. I know that this is important to all of you. It's important to me. It's important to the entire administrative team.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Brian.
All right. So we're going to move on to old business. We have some updates on food services and paper bids. Is that you, Scott?
Mr. Gross.
Yes, uh, so, uh, you should see on your screen is the, uh, paper bid that was opened a couple of months ago on July 6th. And it was awarded to WB Mason, who was our current provider. So this would just need a motion to reaffirm, uh, the business administrators' selection.
Move to reaffirm.
Okay, I have a motion by Ellen, a second by Ginny. Anybody have anything, questions? All right, uh, do roll call, Dan?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Susanna?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Reda?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. So we're unanimous, Scott. Go ahead.
Uh, with regard to food service, I wanted to let you know that, um, food, we had to do a food service transfer in the amount of about $205,000. If you'll recall, the board had authorized up to $275,000. Uh, but at the end during, uh, the audit, the fund transfer that was needed was $205,000. Uh, I should point out with regard to food service, we unfortunately had to lay off several food service employees due to the fact that we will be going into with, with a reduced capacity in our buildings. So this is not without consequence for, for folks, um, you know, who are our employees. Um, we hope to be able to call them back as, as the circumstances improve. You know, but for now, um, you know, those folks have been, uh, put in, in a laid off position. Um, we, we also offered those people an opportunity. We have some, uh, uh, some positions, uh, within the district and some of them, uh, are availing themselves to those. But again, I wanted to let you know that. Um, Megan is working with regard, with the other, uh, buildings with respect to how lunches will, uh, will be handled. They will be handled in classrooms, as you know. Um, we're still waiting for future guidance on, uh, waiver programs for the rest of the year. It's not just about getting a federal waiver. We also have to qualify locally, uh, through the state. And that is a little bit more challenging. So as we learn more about that, we'll be able to share that with you. But as of now, um, that program ended today. Um, and we will wait for more guidance from the state and, and our region as to whether that will qualify for an extension. So that's it for food service.
All right. Thank you, Scott. So next is new business. Uh, you all have in your packets our whole school year of school board meetings. Um, hopefully you guys took a look at this because we do need to, uh, make a motion to approve it or if we need to change anything. Jared, go ahead. Oh.
Uh, I know that there was discussion about potentially doing a joint presentation with the budget committee so that we would only go through the, um, presentations one time. I know that Scott was working with Derek, our town administrator and Cole Reel, our chairman. The budget committee has, uh, is that a possibility or not?
Scott?
I could speak to that. Uh, I, I know that Cole is, and Derek are open to that. Um, what that would look like would be doing, um, a budget presentation for the school side on perhaps a Saturday. And that would be it. So rather than having two meetings, uh, in the evening, it would be a Saturday meeting. Um, and then, um, again, that would be in conjunction with not only the school board, but also with, with the budget committee. And again, we'd have it at a combination of at the high school, uh, and or a Zoom for those who could not attend. But it'll be an opportunity, uh, to streamline the process and, uh, eliminate the need for administration to have to present it twice. So as I learn more about that, and I, and I'll, I'll connect with Derek and, and Cole this week on that, Jared, uh, to see if that is a possibility. Again, the thought process would be, it would be on a Saturday. So, um, and again, that would probably be, you know, probably first or second week in October.
All right. Ellen, do you have, uh?
I think you just answered my question. Uh, we have two budget presentations, a Monday and a Wednesday. So would that Saturday be prior to the fifth or the Saturday?
It, it could be either, it could be on either side of that. But I, I think it has to happen in order, um, for things to move along. Um, it would, it would have to be that, I'll give you the dates. So, so maybe that's a matter of just availability for you folks. Uh, October 3rd or the 10th would be the dates that we would need to do it.
So it's an additional meeting for us?
Um, no, it wouldn't necessarily be because, um, your October 7th meeting, um, you wouldn't need that because, uh, you would be getting that presentation. And then it would be the call, it would be your decision as to whether or not you wanted to have a meeting on October 5th.
Okay.
Technically could have a brief business meeting before these presentations if you had, if you needed to do that, like on that Saturday. Nothing would be, would prohibit you from doing that.
Okay. Jared?
Knowing that's a potential, uh, for the future, I would say let's go ahead and, uh, move this, um, these meetings as presented forward. Knowing that we might be able to potentially work out something with the budget committee to only have one meeting. But I'm, I'm comfortable bringing and moving this schedule forward for vote.
Okay.
Make that motion.
Jared, all right. So I have a second of a first, but I, I would like to say something. And Ginny, go ahead, Ginny.
Are we talking about not having any by the school board presentation?
We can't hear on, on our end.
I mean?
We cannot hear on our end of the Zoom call?
Ginny, move your microphone closer to your mouth. Is she muted too?
Yes.
Okay. Ginny, gotta unmute yourself. Are you muted on Zoom? Bottom left side would have mute with a big red over it. Oh, there, there you are. Can, okay. Thank you.
There you go. Yep.
Um, are we talking about having, um, budget committee meetings? Um, separate from school board meetings or are all of our, um, presentations going to be including the, the budget committee?
The, if, if I may, Heather?
Yeah, go ahead, Jared.
My recommendation is that the presentations for each school that would be given by the principals would be done in a joint session, but we would still meet individually to discuss the budget line items for approval.
Okay. Okay. So I have a motion and I have a second. I just want everybody, especially Susanna, who hasn't been a part of our budget, um, presentations. Each night is ours. So if we did this on a Saturday, we could be there all day. That's a lot of information at one time. Usually Monday night, we have our school board meeting and then we'll have a couple of presentations. And then Wednesday night it's some more. It's a lot of information. There's a lot of taking notes. There's a lot of questions. So if everybody is looking to do a Saturday, I just want you to understand that that is a long day. And it's a lot at once. Ellen?
Why not? I can't. Can't do that. I can't. Um, I don't know if we're looking at having the budget pit committee just listening to the presentation or participating. Two very different things. And in which case, why not ask them to come to each of our meetings that we already have scheduled? They could sit and listen.
I wasn't a part of this. This was Jared and Scott. So I guess you're trying to eliminate- I wasn't a part of this. This was Jared and Scott. So I guess you're trying to eliminate how many days we're meeting in October, Jared?
It was really a two-fold effect. I was trying to limit the amount of time that some of our administration has to put into not only presenting to us, but also then to present to the Budget Committee. So I want to be mindful of their work they need to do. But I do, you know, I understand some of my peers and I agree with my peers that there are some questions that we want to ask that are more pertinent to, you know, potentially hiring individuals or something along those lines that the Budget Committee might not want to know because we want to really focus on some of the learning activity. So I can understand that. It was just an option that I wanted to bring forward to at least explore doing those meetings, knowing that it would free up some of our administrative time for our admins.
And I totally agree with that. My thinking is if the Budget Committee, if that's something to be done, they can come to our regular meetings and listen.
And true, and Scott, maybe we could also talk about recording, you know, these are recorded, especially through GTV. If we could just give those to the Budget Committee as an option, that would something that I'd put forward as well.
They could listen on Zoom. They can listen on Zoom.
True, but the Budget Committee will also have some of their own questions, right, to administrators that's different from the school. So.
I think this can wait till the next meeting, honestly. We'll try to hash it out a little bit more.
Thank you.
Well, we do need to move forward this schedule, at least so that people have an idea of what's going on for September and stuff. So are we able to, we have a motion, we have a second. Are we able to finalize this or do you want to wait?
No, I'm, that's why I made the motion, is I'm comfortable with what's being presented. If the opportunity that we might have a joint session, then of course we would make a motion to amend that. But I'm okay moving forward with that.
Okay, thank you, Jared. So I had a motion from Jared and then Ellen, you second. Does anybody else have anything they want to say?
Dan has a comment.
Yes, go ahead, Dan.
If we remember correctly, I believe January 18th is a holiday. I believe it's Civil Rights Day, is it not? And we traditionally have had school that day. And I believe if you can confirm, I think we are still having school that day.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, so if we're good, I'm gonna take a roll call. Dan?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Susanna?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Rheta?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. So that passes unanimously. And then we can always have an update next board meeting, Scott, for those budget meetings. All right, so moving on, we have some policy stuff to go over. Scott, I know that first policy is yours. Scott, are you still there?
I, we share my desktop with you. I had asked the board with respect to the credit cards to increase the limit to $50,000. Reason being twofold was IT equipment. So there was IT purchases that we need, needed that were far greater than the current limit, which was $10,000. And same thing with PPE. I mean, these were commodities that we had to buy very quickly. You saw how much money. I think we had $24,000 in one order. So it became necessary to use the credit card to pay for these, to lock in the price and to, on both IT in terms of Chromebooks and laptops as well as PPE. So what I'm looking for is an approval to increase the credit card limit for the, you know, for a card to $50,000. As you can see, it's in red here. And to essentially handle it that way. I don't think we're gonna be doing that a ton, but in these times, we needed to do it.
Okay, thank you, Scott. So do I have a motion to approve? Ellen?
I'll move it for discussion.
Okay, Ginny, seconds. All right, any discussion? Okay, see and none. Do roll call. Dan?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Susanna?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Rheta? And Heather, yes. All right, Scott. We have a couple more policies to talk about. Brian?
We do. I'm gonna ask Mrs. Barry to speak to this. But we have policy GBAA and policy JBAA, which has to do with sexual harassment and violence. This is Barry.
Absolutely. Thank you, Brian. The Office for Civil Rights, specifically the Department of Education, in May, the Secretary of Education, Betsy DeVos, amended the regulations relative to Title IX. And the effective date for the regulations is, was August 14th, 2020. So in reviewing policy, the School Boards Association suggested that we suspend policy JBAA, GBAA, and put a, an amended, if you will, notation, which we have done, that with the one after it that states that we are now operating, we have suspended the policies as they were written, and we are now operating under the new regulations. This does not change the fact that for HR, we still operate under Title VII. The recommendation, though, for the School Boards Association was to suspend GBAA, JBAA in their prior form. They have condensed both of those policies into one. So we have put out GBAA1, JBAA1, specifying that we are following the regulations as we are required to do, and we are drafting new policy that we will bring forward to you.
Heather? Yes, go ahead, Ellen.
GBAA1 and 1, and you're, we're calling it a regulation, not a policy. Are they so significantly different than the current that we need to suspend the current? Or is it actually a regu, oh, they are significantly different?
They are, they are significantly different. And I'm not so sure, Ellen. I apologize. Not a great excuse. I'm tired right now. So perhaps using the term regulation was wrong. What we have done is we have just renamed the policies, put a 1 after them to say that we have suspended them.
But they are significantly changed.
Yeah, they are. That's why we're going to follow the federal regulations. That's the statement that we're making. So our practice is now in line with the changes that were put in place as of August 14th.
But this is without review by a subcommittee going through a two-meeting process of approval for a significant change to a policy?
It's not, I'm not presenting a policy.
Right, so let me see if I can clarify. The existing policies are suspended. And we have put notation that we are following the new federal regulations. The policy has not been written. So that's work that the School Boards Association is currently working on. And I should also say that we have done training with all of our administrators around the changes to Title IX. They are significant. So as if we didn't have enough to do, we now have a completely revamped Title IX process and will need to have a new policy. But the policy has not been written. We suspended and we put notation on the website that we are following the new federal regulations. Raise my hand.
Go ahead, Dan.
So I would suggest in the last sentence of the GBAA-1 that we use the term between new and regulations, the word federal. So it says, "as specified in the new federal regulations effective on August 14th, 2020."
Good catch, Dan. Thank you.
Okay, so do you need anything from us, MC?
We don't. So this would be an example, this is notification because we have already taken this action.
Okay, that's what I thought. Does anybody else have any other questions before I move on?
Only, only that, the, the other, the other JBAA, if we can add the federal word in there too, it would be helpful to understand. It's the federal regulations we're under.
Thank you, Dan. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. All right, so moving on, we need to do authorization again for superintendent. Jared, if you want to read this, this is exactly what you said last time.
Yep, as I said to Ms. Morin, thank you again for adopting the verbiage used. So do I need to read it or can I just do it as presented?
You could do it as presented, I think.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Jared. Do I have a second? Oh, Ellen, second. All right, do a roll call. Dan?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Susanna?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Rheta?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. So you are all set, Brian. Usually at this time, we also do Scots, but I was told that since we're back to our regular meetings, we don't need to. Scott, did you want anything? I know we talked about some other stuff. Did you want to add anything to that?
No, I think for tonight, I'm good, Heather, because it's getting late. But at the next meeting, what I would ask is just for the board to reaffirm what you've given me in the past, since it's a new school year, the ability to pay out of sequence with respect to employee reimbursements and/or if a bill's gonna be late and incur a late fee type of thing. But I'll do that the next meeting.
Okay, all right, thank you, Scott. All right, so now we're gonna get into staffing. We have a lot of non-public with that and we also have public stuff. So you all should have the public information in front of you. Go ahead, Brian.
I might recommend that we take a quick look at this, but certainly go into non-public to have more discussions with respect to staffing. But so what we have up on the screen right here, we have some notifications for track changes as well as some changes in teacher assignments, as well as a long-term substitute. So no action required of the board there. For your approvals, we have two administrator nominations. One would be for Callie Rosamack. It must be a little further down, but if you hadn't heard, Mr. LaVallee, our Dean of Students for many years at Goffstown High School, resigned over the summer. So we have, we were bringing forward the nomination of Callie Rosamack as an interim Dean of Students. And we have Mr. Kurt McDermott as a part-time adult ed director. You'll recall Bill Ryan, after being with us for many years, retired. So those are our recommendations. We have a teacher retirement of Jean Tolner. And then we have a number of teacher nominations. At this point, I would ask not to go through all of these. But if you had any questions, I might direct them to MC and to Kate.
Do we need a motion for those two administrators?
We need a motion for each one of these.
Yep.
I'll move approval of the two administrators.
So you want, okay, so we're gonna do just the administrators first. All right, do I have a second? From Ginny. So we'll do roll call. Dan?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Susanna?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Ginny? Rheta?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. So those are good. So now we need to accept the retirement and then the rest of the teacher nominations. So I need a motion to accept the retirement, I'll move, by Ellen. Do I have a second? By Susanna. Do roll call. Dan?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Susanna?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Rheta?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. So now we have teacher nominations. There's quite a few. We need a motion to accept the teacher nominations.
So I'll move.
By Ellen, do I have a second? By Jared, we'll do roll call. Dan?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Susanna?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Ginny? Rheta?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. So Brian, do you want to talk about the co-curricular nominations? Those are sports nominations on the back.
Yeah, so these would be all of our co-curricular and athletics. Again, at this point, we're anticipating these. We are missing a few coaches still. They tend to be the perennial favorites of Mountain View B Team. So we're still short a couple of folks in that. But again, I might ask, please don't have me read every single one of these. The majority of them are returning and the ones who aren't have been thoroughly vetted by Mr. Huff and by Mr. Garrity.
Okay, we need a motion to accept this.
Move to approve co-curricular.
Sports?
Sports.
Okay, thank you, Ellen. Do I have a second? By Jared?
Inquiry?
Yes, go ahead, Dan.
I don't have the luxury of having the list, but there was a name at the top on page two.
Yeah, Molly Brown. That needs to be voted on as well.
Oh, I didn't see that. Okay, we'll go back to that. I thought that was part of the teacher nominations.
That was the question, whether it was included on the front page or not.
She's not a teacher, so that would be.
Right.
All right, good catch, Dan. Thank you. Okay, we'll do that in a second. So I have a motion, I have a second. Let's do roll call. Dan?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Susanna?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Ginny? Rheta?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. So we need a motion to accept the nomination of a student support specialist, Molly Brown.
So moved.
By Ellen, second by Ginny. Do a roll call. Dan?
Just out of curiosity.
Yes.
A student support specialist, is that like in the wing that's across from the principal at the high school? What do they call it?
So Dan, we have a classification that is non-union and it encompasses a number of positions throughout the district, so it's not at any one building. This includes our career resource specialist. It includes our in-school suspension folks. So there are a number of positions that fall under this umbrella that don't nicely fit into other union contracts.
Heather?
I'll be there.
Thank you, Dan. Yes, Ellen?
But this one is specifically for someone who's a speech language assistant, Glenn Leiken Bartlett? Am I correct? Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, so I'm gonna do roll call. Dan?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Susanna?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Rheta?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. All right, the co-curricular coaches, do you need a motion to accept those as well? So on the bottom, we have co-curricular coaches not returning.
Oh.
You don't need a motion.
Those are just notifications.
Okay, all right, so we're set with the staffing in public, correct?
Correct.
All right, so before we go into non-public, other business that may legally come before the meeting. The only thing I just want to reiterate is all our subcommittees are still on hold. But we would like to have that on the September 14th agenda to reevaluate and maybe start figuring out if we can start meeting up again. Anybody else? Yes?
Could that, could that list be sent back out? Who is what, on what?
Yeah, I think so. It should be in your email, but we can, we can definitely do that.
Thank you.
We'll send it out.
Okay. Anybody else before we go into non-public? Okay, going into non-public under RSA 91- A, semicolon, 3, 2, A, the dismissal, promotion, or compensation of any public employee or the disciplining of such employee or the investigation of any. or the disciplining of such employee, or the investigation of any charges against him or her, unless the employee affected, one, has a right to a meeting, and two, requests that the meeting be open, in which case the request shall be granted. We're also going to go in under C, matters which, if discussed on public, would lightly affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of the public body itself, unless such person requests an open meeting. This exemption shall extend to any application for assistance or tax abatement or waiver for a fee, fine, or other levy, if based on inability to pay or poverty of the applicant. All right, so I assume we're staying in here, and Adam? And who else needs, Mr. Borger?
But I'll make that, I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Second.
All right, so I have a motion by Dan, second by Ellen, we'll do roll call. Dan?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Susanna?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Rheta?
Yes.
And Heather?